Magic words. All right, thank you everyone. We the board met in closed session at nine o'clock this morning. We appreciate the patience of those of you who have been waiting for this portion of the meeting. I need to first inquire if there is anyone wishing to address the part with regard to items that we discussed in the closed session.
There is not.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move into open session. We do have, we typically do not have, do not have an interpreter available during our study sessions. However, we do have closed captioning available. And it's my understanding that we do have someone with us today, at least one person who will be taking advantage of closed captioning. And so with regard to that, closed captioning tends to be a little behind. So I would request that anyone addressing with questions or report or anything of that nature to please speak a little slowly or be aware that that someone heard that magic words going on in the background and it has to help you stay caught up on what we're saying. So at this point, we have six point oh one, which is our discussion about our update on measures C and D. Oh, right, before we do that, as I was just remembering, we did go here. We do have an item we need to, we need to vote on in the open session and that put is item four point oh one, student personnel stipulated expulsion under, at this time, someone please make a motion with regard to that. I'll get that.
I need approval of the stipulated expulsion after some second break.
Here we have a motion by Mrs. Roger and a second by Mr. Buckman. And feel, Mrs. Roger.
Yes.
Mr. Brownfield.
Yes.
Mr. Buckman.
Yes.
Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Mrs. Sinton, yes. Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
And yeah. Okay, I am going to be passing this around for people to sign. Please, I'm just gonna pass finish your question. Okay, so now, okay, I can test. Um, now we will move on to item six point oh five, measures C and D update. I don't know where to look.
Miss Ryan, you get me today.
Okay, well, take you.
I, I get to be the Ryan today.
No, you're welcome.
It's all good. Uh, thank you. Welcome. Uh, today I will start with measure D, a quick, quick little update on measure D. Uh, we're, we're getting close to being finished at Moro Bay right now, building C. We are installing TVs today. Furniture is in the classrooms. Still need to finish the library, library has the carpet concern right now and then they'll come back and do the, all the bookshelves and everything there, but it's getting very close to being finished, so that's very exciting. Parking lot, Chris Simpson, where are we at on the parking lot?
Yeah, Silver Seven. They, they can move back in, so.
Excellent, so we're very close finishing the parking lot over there and then we'll be back on our way out of that, that site. That's fantastic. So high school, as you know, I, I closed the door because there's a bunch of noise happening right now, they're driving excavators around. Uh, it looks like they're gonna be doing the, they're working on the road right now. They're working on all the betters, the concrete betters and get that all done before the storm or lack of storm at the moment, I should say. But it's good, everybody stepped it up, they're, they're making two pours a day of concrete to try to beat the storms, they didn't have a mess if it did rain, so that's great. Uh, it looks like they're supposed to be given December 11th, I think is the email I saw just a while ago, so we're getting close, it's gonna be good. That being said, let's move to measure C, so I brought, I brought our new project managers. Uh, I wanted to introduce them so you can see who, uh, who our team is now, so. First, everybody knows Rick Simpson, he's gonna continue to be one of our project managers, been a great asset and he's my, he's the, he's the man that's helping keep our systems in place, teaching the other guys how we wanna do it, because we've learned a lot from, from the first bond, moving into this bond and we gotta be all on the same page, so this is working out great. Chris Peoples, one of our project managers at the end. Dave LeSear, the new project manager.
Dave LeSear.
LeSear.
Right, I got that right, right? And Ryan Harrigan. So David, Chris were promoted from within, they already work for us, which is great. Ryan comes from the CMR as a product manager. So I, I, our team's fantastic, right? It's, it's, can't say enough about how we're, how we're headed into this bond, just because the amount of time that we're all taking, they're all in one room, we're collaborating, we're setting our systems in place. It's, it's gonna be nice, efficient bond this time. We're learning from our mistakes from the first bond of, you know, going through the plans, we're, you know, making sure the plans are accurate. Few coordinations, which we've been saying from day one. So now what I'm doing is making sure everyone, every project manager looks at every plan, whether it's their project or not. Then we also have our DSA inspector looking at the plan. We also have Gary Geary looking at the plans. And then I page with them, with the architect, we go through everything. So that's six, you know, six, seven more eyes looking on these plans, they catch everything that we can possible. So we go in to bid these, that they're accurate, we minimal change rooms. So that, that being said, it's, it's, it's a great way, it's a lot coming at us, but I feel confident that we're getting all the systems in place and, and it's gonna be great, right? We got our software in place, we got the room in place, we got our, our process in place and I'll show you when I do my screen share. We have one calendar we all look at as far as projects, you know, we have the, we have it listed out where it shows the architect's proposed schedule and then we call it the reality schedule, right? And if they're staying on track and you'll see when I show you that wherever it's red, means they're falling behind, right? And, and as all of us looking at this schedule, looking at each other's project is a good visual of which architect's falling behind, right? And we talk about why they fall behind, so. Because our goal is to keep it on schedule and move forward and if they don't, that's why they got phase one, right? If they can't keep it on schedule phase one, we might make changes for phase two, so.
You will re-bid phase two, correct?
We will revisit getting more architects for phase two.
Oh, for the architects.
Yes. So, that's good, I'd like to share my screen if possible, because I will.
Just ask the question.
Yeah, sure.
I, I have two things, one, I wanna make sure because we kind of, our update on measure C was very brief. Does anyone have any questions about measure C?
Measure D.
Measure D.
I know, C.
Measure C, we're, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't just kinda breeze through, but we're, we're at the end, but it's good, so my, my.
I get it, I get it, I just wanted to, to make sure. And then with, I'm really impressed by this, all these different eyes and perspectives on plans. Does this need a, I know we're not very far into it yet, but if you see that one architect is falling behind, are we able to share resources if someone else is on track or a little bit ahead on a piece of a project? Looking at Rick because I know you and I know you do stuff, but did we reach a point where we need?
This schedule falls onto the architect. This is the architect not putting enough resources on their end to stay on schedule.
So it's not us at this point sharing the resources we have? Okay, got it, thank you.
And this is, so what it works is the project managers, they're communicating with the architect regularly and as you'll see, one of the schedules has some red and as it starts falling behind, we get to the point where Chris goes and has a conversation with the architect and lays it out, right? So, hey, this is our concerns, right? I don't want to jeopardize phase two. We, you know, we like working with you, but like, are you overloaded? Do you not have a right project manager on your side? Like, what do you need to do to get us back on schedule? Because like I said, we want something to start in the summer, so that's our question. There's some unknowns, right? DSA, how long it's gonna be in this DSA? You know, we have a gauge, but it could be two months for a project or it could be six months. I was just talking to Lucio Meyer and they had one in there for a year, so that will really dictate construction. But what we're also doing too is separating some of these projects, like the temporary housing. First, we grouped everything together, but temporary housing can go through DSA really quick, so we're actually pulling that out separate. So, so we can get this temporary housing at Potchaygo and or finish at CL Smith and get that, that done and ready and start moving those people out, so. There's stuff we can do as we're moving forward. Now having some of these contractors on board for the lease leaseback and they're showing up to these meetings, it's fantastic, right? They're already giving great input on how we can stay on schedule, start something, you know? I'm thinking of our H because it was a great conversation the other day about what we can do and work together to, to get the movers on that. Movers won't, they don't wanna go under, you know, unless they have a contract, the movers don't wanna put us on schedule to move forward. So, we came up with a creative solution to make that happen, right? So, that piece has been great, you know? And that's a lot different than the first one. We didn't have all the project planners looking at everything, you know? We didn't have them in every meeting and so this time it's a lot more collaborative and contractors on board currently, so it's working out well. Okay? Can I share my screen, Amy?
Yes.
So, my screen all set here. I wanna show you the, the schedule pieces, I was just talking about that. I can't see something on my screen. So, here's, I'll zoom out a little bit so you can get a better visual. So right here, right? I kinda have it broken up by project manager and then projects. And then you can see the colors of the different phases of the architectural piece of this project, right? So it's color coded on purpose, so we know when we're supposed to get the schematic design, we know when we're supposed to get the design development. We know when they're starting with construction documents. And as you can see, there's some red down here. That's the reality section of that project, that they're behind. Why are they behind? It could be, like I said early on, I underestimated the survey, amount of time surveys we're gonna take. So that is kinda throwing people a little bit, right? But we're forcing them to make up schedule, so. But this is a good visual, I mean, we have, we have the DSA dates on here, we have the bidding date, you know, lease tentative, we have the board meeting on there, we have our construction start date. So we're moving towards all those goals, make sure we stay on schedule.
Can you tell me where the color code is the key to that? Oh, down there.
Yeah, I'll show you.
Ask for you.
That's right. So, like I said, color codes, we got schematic design, design and development, we got construction documents, this DSA submission, we have a construction start date, we have partial survey, we haven't received all the survey, like, we're keeping track of everything. Bid date, board meeting approval date, plan review, which is a huge one for us. Getting this many eyes on the set of plans and trying to, and right now, because this is first phase, so everything's coming, is hitting at once. We're pretty close and when we talk plan review, it's not just a, you know, a day of reviewing plans, it's like a week or more, two weeks sometimes, to flip through plans and go through every page and make markups. So we, us as a team have worked through a way this is gonna be efficient for everybody, right? And we also have a contingency plan, but like, we're so busy, but we don't lose schedule. We have a, a second tier way of still reviewing and getting eyes on it, maybe not as thorough as everybody on it, but, but that's worst case scenario. So we're sticking to best case scenario where we have a lot of eyes on it. And as you can see, the red is past due, past their deadlines, I'll scroll over here. So you can see, I'm pointing my cursor, you can see what I was supposed to be due. As of the next week, it's not, we still haven't received that schematic design and design development. So we're, we're keeping track and we, in these weekly, or every other, every other week meetings we have with the architects, they bring us updated schedules or project managers reach out, find out where they're at, so we can keep this updated and keep, stay on top of it, so we don't fall behind on. Okay, any questions before I move on? That was pretty lengthy, but I just want you to see the details going on behind the scenes, because it, you know, in this organization we're doing is, is, I think, pretty awesome, right? Like, we, we got our systems in place, by door in the morning, it's revolving, they, they stand up, like, as soon as they see me pull in, they're all, I open up my door and then they're all standing in line, right? It's like, who can get in line first and come into the office, but, but to me, that's great, that's great communication. And then I'll go in, sit and talk with them all and we just talk. There you go. So keeping that good communication, everybody here. There you go. We're good, so, anyway, that, that, like I said, that's, that's just a big piece for us and, and having these, these regular conversations, having the project managers sit in these design meetings now, having the, the contractors that are on board, they're showing up to those meetings, they're being productive, we got Gary Geary in those meetings, there's a lot of meetings, like, like my calendar is stacked up full of meetings, but it's exciting. It's awesome, we're gonna do a lot of good. So, any questions?
No.
No question.
Not right now.
All right, so, we'll move into the little presentation here of just updates on the projects. You may have seen some of these pictures, if not, you know, you'll see, I'll have, there's some new renderings on some, some new layouts as we fine tune this, so I'll just go through each, each site again and feel free to stop me and ask questions. So first one is Lost Ranchos. Again, we, we, I'll be zooming in and out, so bear with me so you can see the pictures. We made a lot of progress on this, not a lot of changes in this one, except for the, the couple restrooms are filling in the wall, but adding the air conditioning is, you know, a big achievement. Coming up, we'll make sure we, we know what's hard floors, what's carpet, that, that design, make sure we have all the data in the right places. Yes?
So if you can go back, I don't know what you're called, a little, a little things at the top of the, is that where the, is that air conditioning, is that what we're hiding?
So, this is a, it's been updated since then, we're putting all the air conditioner condensers on the end of the building.
Rather than, rather than, so those little, what are they called at the top? Whatever, those are not there.
It'll come to me after we finish, but.
Yeah, but, but they're not there.
But our, no.
Okay.
So our goal is to keep as much on the ground as possible in, in the locations and it's not
Okay.
too intrusive, so that way it's more maintenance savvy, right?
Less expensive.
Right, they can get that too, right? But it's also, I don't have maintenance guys walking across the roof and they slide, you know, fall off or anything like that, so. On the ground is faster and easier to service, so.
Thank you.
Here's the floor plan again, let's zoom in to this one side, this is where most of the work is happening. This is where they're adding the two restrooms for each classroom. Right, and then this wall currently is open, they're gonna fill it back in because of the seismic upgrade we have to do this building. So that's the other piece, it's gonna, it's taking a little bit longer is because of the seismic upgrade. So structural engineer's been sitting in a lot of these meetings and he's working with DSA, sat at a couple of those meetings with DSA by Zoom, listens to the structural engineers talk, you know, it's a, it's a lot of, lot of number talk that, okay, that's why we hired you, because that is over my head, but moving forward, so it's great.
And this is, this is.
This is Lost Ranch.
This is the building, right, the building that, as you're facing, the office over here, just to the left of the office, where the old, like preschool and specialty classes used to be in there.
Recording in progress. And so is that AC inside there or are there being expedited to us?
So I'll zoom in here a little bit. This ductwork that runs right down the middle of this building. There you go. So, in these rooms, there's a mechanical place for the furnace, if you see where my cursor's circling. And then there's ductwork that runs along this wall, that will feed, and then at the end of the building is where the condensers will go for the air conditioning. And as you can see, right, we got, this is me with the teachers figuring out how much carpet they want versus how much hard floor they want. So you can see this is, this is carpet, this is hard floor. We have the sinks in there, yes.
Oh, so will there be nowhere to be false tie-ups up there? Will it be like showing the whole thing?
No, there'll, there'll be a T-bar ceiling with the lights like in most classrooms. Uh, that way it hides a lot of wiring and conduits that we need to get everywhere from data to electrical.
That's stylish.
It is clean, it's clean looking, and the other piece of that too is with the, with the T-bar ceilings and smooth. We have dependent lights and open ceilings. First thing, we just had this discussion earlier today among the architects, is dust and cobwebs. So thinking long term, right? Like, that's, it's a lot of work to keep the dust and cobwebs out, like, what's the first thing you do, you have to be looking, so. I mean, I'm also looking at on that level too, is maintenance, but, but how are we gonna keep it clean and neat with as much as possible, right? So, that being said, so here's a rendering. Yeah, colors, this is their first shot of the colors, I, I, I'm not sure we're gonna stay in this color range, but this kinda gives you a look of, see, here's the furnace cabinet right here, then that ductwork that comes across. Ceil is clean, place for TV.
And the furnace doesn't work too loud, does it make it?
It's so quiet now, you don't really ever hear much.
My teaching days it wasn't that loud.
Yeah.
So, I don't think it was this younger class, but some of them were open, you could see the ductwork, that's more like a high school setting.
That was like student services in Moro Bay.
Yes.
That was more the industrial look or the, or like the shop classes.
So we're not gonna see that.
Not, not in classrooms, and this also helps with sound too.
Yeah.
It's open like that in a shop, it's not that, that big a deal.
That's true.
I like Pack Beach, you'll see the Pack Beach woodshop area, we did put T-bar ceiling in there.
We did.
It helps for a lot of things, helps keep the ducts, helps keep it clean, gives us pathways for wiring, electrical. And then another picture, like I said, these are just the first renderings of this. This one shows two TVs, but what this is supposed to represent is, you have two options for the TV, right? So, and then we also, we, we're also trying out a bracket, we installed it in our office to test that this TV actually will slide up higher out of the way. So, because this, this TKK level, they're not using as often as the upper grades, but this optional is you pull it down in front of the whiteboards or like that level, use it when you want to, then push it back up, so you still have more whiteboard space. Right, so, and it has a little swivel too, you can swivel a little bit, but you'll, they'll have the option, when we get closer there, we'll ask which, which wall do you want to keep your TV on? Because some like to have it off the left, so the kids turn, look at it, and keep all the whiteboard, or a couple have it in front. So, hoping like, we also learned, these have to go a little bit lower than the high school TVs too, so that bracket comes down about where this is right now, so, uh, we're gonna see that work. Moving on, this is CL Smith. This is us, this is the new kindergarten portable going on the east side. The big discussion on this was trying to connect those existing walkways without a concrete built in to the new building, which looks like it's gonna be possible, keep that continuity, it's clean, looks good. And then that second door that will take them out into this, where the shed is, their play area. And I think we got the orientation figured out now and, and make this work, so. Rendering. So most, I usually ask for no students in the renderings, but I didn't have time to change the other one. I just like the clean, open room so you can see what we're doing, so. And then we sat down, went through, went through this with, with the teachers there too and talked about where, where they want the cabinets, again, options for TVs, walls with tapboards, so they can pin away as much as they want to.
Pin away.
Right?
So this will be my question until whatever, so the door.
Yeah.
Till the rain comes. So the doors are gonna be really low with staff, which I guess, so are we paying because of the weather and because of the rain, are we paying? Is there a lot of attention now to the flow, the drainage?
Yes.
All of our things.
Yes. And even, even further than that, like at CL Smith, what existing portable is now, us talking, I also forgot to add in another conversation, we're also taking our own maintenance staff too, grounds, to electricians, and also reviewing plans, right? So, a lot of eyes getting on these plans, but we're also picking up issues like, at CL Smith, one of the sewer lines doesn't have enough soap in it, right? And if we add in, we add on to that, then it's gonna be a long flat and that's gonna be an issue long term, but that came from our plumber.
Thank you.
Right, and so we ran, we ran a camera down, we could see it, so now we're getting to the architect to say, hey, we need a solution for this, what, what do we do? Because I don't want a long-term issue, I have to do something, right? So, a lot of input, a lot of, a lot of input from everybody.
Doing like a rainy day that was supposed to be a day.
Yes, exactly. Here's, here's the, the existing building that we're adding the two restrooms. You can see some of these markups, like, we're taking this wall out, there's no need to have a wall and a door. Making sure these, these doors, we have doors on here, so I'm not sure how they're gonna get in there. But these are the type of details that project managers are going through in the kitchen, right? You need a door to get in the restroom, I mean, that's kind of important, that's kind of the whole purpose, right?
But not a door to the storage, you said?
No, we don't, well, there's two big, large roll-up doors right here and right here.
Oh, so the, but you're taking the wall out and the door out?
Taking this little section of wall.
So.
So this'll be all nice and open right through here.
Okay, so you'll have storage going on?
Over here, yeah, storage on the walls for them to put their trucks, their bins full of toys, we'll give them shelving, they have shelving, but we'll, we'll get new stuff and these nice big plastic bins, they can put everything in.
Into the vestal.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm sorry, a long, it would even come, um, I've seen some storage areas in some of the elementary schools and it fills up
Yes.
really fast and the tree to get to the shelves just seems like the door.
So.
The table?
What, visually contained, I don't know.
So what we're also adding is a storage shed outside.
Okay, for the trucks.
To add, add more storage. The storage in this, this grade level is always a concern.
Okay, thanks.
Now, you get to Potchaygo where they have nine storage sheds, we're gonna have to slim that down and probably do a bigger building, you know, somewhere in the footprint, but we don't want nine silos, right? So, there's a cleanup, there's a balance there, right? We don't give them storage and everything looks horrible. Or we give them too much storage, then just, they just push stuff in it, right, so.
But these are, these are, bathrooms are for staff or for students?
Students, this is for when they're out on the playground.
And come in.
And that was a request from the site.
So like, it's my question, it's like.
There's also, there's also restrooms on the inside.
Yeah, I'm going back to storage, Chris.
Yeah.
You guys have students, that storage is gonna be really tempting for students, I mean.
What do you mean?
Well, they're gonna come into that little vestal and to use the bathroom, but now there'll be no wall or door to that storage room? What's gonna stop the kids from?
Right now, they, they open up these, both these roll-up doors.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
When they're, when they're playing outside and then there's somebody standing right here, watching them go in and out.
So, okay, so.
So there's, there's, they're not on their own, there's somebody standing. So there's, there's, they're not on their own, there's somebody standing there.
Okay.
I, if I, if I may, I presume to know the answer here, but I'm thinking you could have an accordion.
Right here, you say, right here?
On the interior, that interior wall in there, it's being removed, cause being a teacher, little ones in the past, I'm, I'm marked on the right track.
Well, we can revisit, get on the site and then, I mean, this is, this is looking at what's already existing there right now, it's all over, right? And what we don't wanna do is create all these compartments where kids can hide too. So without the wall, that is, that's a better visual. So remember, you have, this is, you know, this is at least eight feet garage door roll-up. So that's, that's a lot of visual, you get in here and here.
And you're, you are getting input from teachers and principals.
We sat with them.
Yeah, so, yeah, good.
I mean, then let's give you a bigger over, overview. This is the childcare portables. This is, this has changed again a little bit, this layout um. Cause they had this intruding in onto the field too much, so we actually changed the shape of the portable. We got, had two different sizes that we can choose from. So there's a newer layout, a little more efficient, so we're still working on that piece. And then where that area we were just talking about is right here, this vestal, those bathrooms. And then this layout's changed to this portable now is over here. But we'll add storage, a storage shed over here, like a twenty foot two garage door roll-up, give them plenty of storage. I mean, we're taking a little bit of the storage away from the restrooms, so we'll accommodate and give them more. Okay? Go to middle school. Again, this is, this is a pretty big project, uh a lot of details that we're still working through. Restrooms to look like we're gonna have to add a new fire loop. What's the best way to add another fire line in there to separate mess water with firewater? A lot of good meeting the other day, they still got a lot of work to do, so uh again, a little concerned. We need to make sure it stays on schedule. So they actually, this, this architect added another project manager to separate looms and lamps since it's the same architect. They have two dedicated project managers for that instead of one.
Which architect is this?
Nineteen six, Alton Rover. Again, this is layouts of restrooms, you've seen that before. This, this drawing you see and this spread you've seen, we actually just went through colors. Uh this last meeting, started to, started to dial in the colors and the, and the materials, so yes, Mark.
Sorry, it's a lot, it's a long-term commitment. Graffiti, does the original paint affect the ability to take graffiti on and off? So we're gonna keep covering it up.
This is kinda gone back, it's come back and forth with graffiti coating. Rick, you're more than welcome to correct me if I get this wrong, but this, the paint, it's easier just to paint it than spend all the money on the graffiti coating. Because it's a whole process to get the graffiti off, and you could've just gone in the same color paint, painted over. So you get that right, Rick?
And then we will have lots and lots of paint that actually.
Yes, so color schemes will be pretty much looms and lamps will be the same, right? We're trying to standardize colors as much as possible, still give some independence, right? It's a balance there, I don't want everybody, I don't wanna do the whole district in one color, right?
So it's middle school, I think we should use that, that pink color to calm people down.
That's another whole conversation.
Is this the color scheme you're contemplating?
Yes. Kinda get rid of, and the site loved it, we showed Nathan and he took and showed some of his staff, they, they liked it. They modernize it, cleans it up, so. Move on to the inner quad where we're actually, right now it's all concrete, we don't really wanna add some planters in there. We're still working out the size of the planters, but giving it some planters and some green, so it doesn't feel like a concrete jungle. It's gonna be really nice. And then these planters are also uh seating benches, right? So you can sit on the seat wall, so you can sit on those. Fencey, didn't get a chance to add to photos, or didn't save, I, I do have photos, but fencey's gone up uh all the way around. And yes, we, we had more neighbors call as it was going in. I, I put, I put Dave to the test, I said, Dave, see if you can keep me from having to go out to meet with neighbors. So he met with the neighbor on the site, neighbor fully understands why the fence is where it is and.
So this was a new and different neighborhood?
New one, so on that same upper field.
Yeah, yeah.
But a new neighbor, so uh I owe him a drink today. I didn't think he'd do it, but he did, so.
Thank you for doing that PR.
Chris.
Yes, that's right, but that's right, you did show up too, so.
Two against one.
We got it, forgive me, both, they're, they're the team out there with the fence, so Chris and Dave are my project managers for the fence project, so.
We like to keep the neighbors happy as much.
Yes.
Or at least have them understand what we're doing with the day.
Right, so and there's a couple others that popped up, there's a couple emails that went back and forth, but it's up. Mr. Peoples walked in, saw one of the neighbors, she's, it's up, it's in. You know, I mean, we did make, we made a lot of accommodations, especially, this was the, this was probably the hardest site. Moving it off the, off that wall, leaving enough space for our mower to get down in there that we can get out. Or we, if we need to clean, if there's trash back there, weed whack, so uh I think it's good. It doesn't look as bad as like everybody thinks it does, but.
Is it just standard chain link?
Yeah, I could, I, I might have a picture unless you.
Or send it to us.
Yeah, I don't notice it driving, I drive down there all the time, I don't notice it.
Yes, it's, it's not that bad.
I'll have to go and check it out.
So this will sound insensitive, I guess, but is there enough room down there that we can end up with a homeless encampment? Although we're so much, we should not offer it, but.
So, so there's, there's enough room to get back to, yes.
All right.
James had much of fun, but we also did put gates.
You did.
At, cause that was one of the concerns from this, one of the back there is that we blocked a lot of stuff. It wasn't just like sneak in and walk down there.
Right.
You're literally gonna have to climb a six-foot fence to get back there.
Okay, good.
And it would make it difficult.
Thank you.
Right? But this is gonna show though, where the trash come from. Which is what we're finding out is the neighbors, right? They like to say a homeless person brought in a couch way down the valley. Couch came from the other side of the fence, you know, the other side of the wall, so, but this, this will, this will help, but. As you can see, I mean, I don't think that looks bad.
No.
You know, that's, that's clean, right? And we stay on top of a berm, we stay, like, we didn't cut a lot of trees down, we trimmed some bushes back, we were considered on that piece. You know, and this, and this is another one, uh one of the neighbors here was concerned, you know, we're gonna block this, they, like, we left this open on between, between the fence and the neighbors so they can walk down through there if they need to. It's just clean, right? Again, this is, this, there was a fence here, this is just new fence and taller with the gate. And then if you keep going straight down, we got some vehicle access gates now. Little tricky at that spot, but it was more to keep the homeless out, but also give us access to the gate, so. There's your uh fence photos. Let's see, moving on, Chaco. So Chaco is another one that's uh very performable layout, it's kind of where we ended for the temporary housing. So we're gonna put four on the blacktop. And then we're gonna do five down here in the field. And, and keep it all the way on the left so we can have fields for the children to play on, right? So we're gonna, it's gonna take a little work and make sure we have sprinklers still going, water the grass. But uh in the end, when we're all done, we'll, we'll do a full field renovation, but.
And then they'll still have a lot of that um blacktop area still available to them as well, they want really large.
Very large, but in, in this process, like we had to take out a couple of the basketball hoops, but we're gonna buy portable ones. So we can move them around, cause what's gonna happen right now, it's not, it's not so bad here right now, but because this building, they'll put their lay-down yard, their trucks, tractor, they're on the backside, cause you can get in from over here. But when we get to this, this building, we're gonna have to fence off a portion of this for them to keep their materials and the tractors and, and then just like so high, they're gonna have to coordinate when they bring concrete trucks and, and vehicles in, because it goes right through the playground or, you know, blacktop area. So it'll just be coordination and, and we've talked to Marcelo about it and, and he understands, but we're, we're really, I'll be right there, Mark.
Yes.
We really set the expectation, this is not, not, it's, it's gonna be a challenge, right? And, and setting them now, right? We're gonna do the best we can to accommodate everything, but it is gonna be, this is gonna be probably the toughest site for construction. Cause it's so tight and there's not a lot of room and moving people around in these temporary houses, you know, the, the selling point is all the temporary ones have air conditioners. Yeah, you gotta spin it the right way, so yes, Mark.
So the, the movable basketball hoops?
Yep.
So DSA approved or some?
No.
No, okay, and so then?
So it's not what Marcelo says, not they don't play games and, and they don't play actual basketball games, it's more if they just throw a ball at.
Right.
And this way we can move them around when we have to make adjustments to the fence. We can chain them together so they don't disappear.
Well, yeah, so I'm, I'm kinda concerned that neighborhood has a lot of Cal Poly.
Yeah.
Especially right across the street, so can, can six Cal Poly kids come in and move it? Cause I'm thinking super likely.
Very possible.
There's no.
Well, here's, here's, if that, if that happens.
Yeah.
We will all smart.
That's what I'm saying.
If I have to drill and put a, you know, an anchor bolt in the ground and we chain it to the anchor bolt.
Thank you.
It is what it is, right?
Yeah.
So we, they might get us once, but they won't get us twice.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Are we keeping mindful of the neighbor?
The neighbor? Yes, yes, so we, we have reached out to the neighbor.
The neighbor.
And the neighbor knows there's construction coming. And I, I know, so the neighbor does know.
Everyone's asked Chris, I know I asked Chris about that.
So, and we, we've done our process, legal-wise, we're all like, everybody had their chance to, to say their piece. That we've run, we're done that process, we're in good shape, city knows what, what we're gonna do. The other, the other big piece of this size, those trees. We, I went to the city this time, got, you know, to break down the sidewalk, right near the sidewalk, let them know, so I had developed this form. Love fourteen trees, I think they gotta come up along there. Told them our plan, so we're still submitting it back to them. But the city, the guy I talked to personally is actually gonna share all the survey, cause they knew there was an issue with the sidewalk. So he's gonna share all those documents with me, which is great, right? Cause they kind of haven't figured out on their end. So we'll see if we can come meet somewhere in the middle for this repair on the sidewalk, so it's not just us.
So they'll, they'll take some of the cost of that?
I'm gonna try.
Okay, yeah, no, that's, that's, sidewalk is theirs, that's the math.
So that, that's a good thing, city, city knows I've cut down trees though, they know I've been cutting down trees. But we're, we're replacing, so like Eugene T and all those who flipped us, if you go down there, you'll see I planted fourteen oaks. All up there, which is, it looks, it looks really good, so we're coming back planting trees. Okay, let's see. Going down here. So this, this is the latest discussion that for Chaco is to put this TKK playground. And we've had several different conversations, you know, is it multiple shade structures for each classroom? Is it one big shade structure, is it two shade structures? Is it two playgrounds, the one playground? So we went over, met with Marcelo, gave them the different, you know, schematics of options here, trying to, trying to dial this in. He was gonna review with his teachers and get back to us and let us know. My guts tell me this is probably more like a shade structure on the end, shade structure on the end. They'll have their trike, track in the middle, two separate playgrounds. Uh instead of what we originally had thought like individual shade structures for every classroom. So it seems like they're kind of leaning away from that, at least at this point, so I could change on my next meeting with them, so at this point, that's what I know. Like you see, like, like this is one layout where we had all shade structures. So this one's still evolving. This one though, this is another size, big upgrade, another, another lengthy zooming, DSA instructional engineers, this is them. I'll talk these numbers and what needs to be done, but they're, they're getting it dialed in, I think it's gonna, it's gonna work. I got some renderings.
All the bathrooms have doors?
Yes.
Okay.
They do. And we have six inside and outside, so that's good. Again, they, you put, I don't like people in my pictures, but we didn't have time to have them remove, so. Pretty straightforward, right? Lot of light on the, on, on the east side, up high, so the slopes and wall space. As you, this would be looking out, well, I call it west side, but I don't think it's actually west, I think it's north. And that's, that side, right? As you can see, the section of the wall here, that, like you're losing set of windows there, you're losing set of windows over here, and that's all because of structural upgrades. Right, but what we wanted to do is keep those upper lights, cause that nice natural light coming in is, is nice, right?
Do all the classrooms function without, if the lights are off, then the daylight will keep on going if there, there was an outage?
I can't say yes, no, cause there's some classrooms that, you know, I mean, I'm thinking more bag, there's a couple classrooms that don't have windows. Right, right, there's ASB room, like there's two rooms, there's no windows, so if lights went out, they're out.
Yeah, generator, we have some generator.
No, not to run the whole campus. Generator situation is if we're gonna downfall on time, we gotta plug in, it'll bring up like the computer system and the phone system. And keep that going, you know, but it's not for the whole site. Okay, any questions from the one? Okay. Bishop's Peak. So Bishop's Peak, we, we're making some changes here too. You know, since the last time we talked, we originally, this is the modular building on the backside. We were gonna add restrooms on the end of that one, but because of the, the size constraints in that area and then they wanted to add a separate panel, like it just got not accessible for us to do service on the building too. So we decided to move the restroom to the end of this building and do a stick build on the end of this. So everybody liked that idea and RRM, the architect thinks that's a better idea, it's better location, gives them more flexibility to move that building around, the, the modular building. Emplace it and get the, get the grades they need and give us access behind the building in case we need to work on it.
Mr. Fong?
Yes?
If we're talking, uh could we go back to that last slide? The, we're talking TK and K. Will those students then be escorted to that restroom?
Those restrooms in the TK and K's.
Oh, so this, who, who is this?
This is for when they're out in the playground.
Gotcha.
So instead of going over here, right now, there's a portable one over here on the, on the blacktop. The multiple portable, we'll, we'll do away with it, oh, we're just moving on the end of this building. So there'll be two restrooms and a general neutral bed, restroom in the middle.
That was a, a mental slip, I know what they have for a restroom.
The next picture's.
Can we go back to that?
Yeah.
So when we, there are places where modulars come and they, they're not, nowhere I can think of is continuous, so there's like these little narrow gaps. So when you do a stick build here, is it literally sharing this wall?
No.
Yeah.
So it will look like it's sharing the wall.
Yeah.
But it's all done, you, you, you won't really notice much, you'll, you'll think it's just good, but, but there'll be a seismic separation too, too. And that's intentional, so it doesn't kick us into seismic upgrades in the building. So as long as it's separated. So as long as it's separated, uh, for us, that's good, because if we actually connect it to it. And we could do certain square foot and certain cost, it could kick us into seismic upgrade, which then, that's what's happened at. Pacheco and Los Ranchos, and what we're trying to do, we're watching this with with our, uh, cost estimates at certain points. Make sure we're not going over that fifty percent threshold value. That will kick us into that, so we're very conscious of that, and then, like this site particularly, we've gone back and got creative on. On some changes to keep those costs down, so it doesn't kick us into that.
So what I've noticed at some of the sites is that becomes a place for leaves or.
They'll have a cap.
So that the roof lines will.
Yes. They'll have vinyl, you won't you won't see it, but it'll it'll all be connected, so nothing gets damaged. And this, again, this is like the modular layout, here's your two restrooms that that these two classrooms share. Same with these two classrooms, right, these doors will have half lights, so they can at least see in there, but the doors will keep the sound down. And then the sinks are on the outside of the bathroom, so they can pull people in and out faster. There's gonna be a little change to this, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna keep one staff restroom here, we're gonna sink these, uh. This, this right here into. Into this area, and give more more classroom, because we have to add a door, there has to be another door here. Because of the size of the classroom, so once you get over nine hundred and sixty square feet. You have to have a second one, that's why portables are nine hundred and sixty square feet, we have to have a door. Once you get past that, you have to add two doors, so, good example of temporary housing that is at. Uh, Seal Smith right now, that was the size built down here. There's two, there's two doors. Uh, I think it's in Bakersfield is one, and I, Bakersfield, Fresno, I don't remember exactly where the plan is. I've been there, and when I've done this before, it's because about midway through, people like close walls up, I go make a visit and look at them. Make sure, like, you know, those conversations happen, we're designed, we might want another outlet, or they forgot to put an outlet where we want a TV. Right, before they close it up, for me to add another outlet is is penny versus me trying to get an outlet in there after. Or we do the wire mold like you see behind you, like, it's that last check before they seal everything up, make sure we're all good. Windows look right, make sure the outlets are where they should be, the DAS where it should be, so, uh, it's worth a little drive over there, because I've caught stuff before, right, so. Okay. Uh, this gives you a little better idea of the layout, this is this is not the latest layout, but that extra restroom will be right here. Right, and then, this restroom goes away. And all the issues where what they don't wanna touch is this, there's a retaining wall back here, they don't wanna have to touch that retaining wall, because that would just. But all this, all this stuff that goes into re recalculating and structural and, yeah, we don't wanna touch that. So, with that, I mean, with this going away, that allowed them to slide the building over a little bit more and get the angles that they needed. This is the existing building. You know, this is the, this is the demo, I believe. Uh, it was pretty much staying the same layout, the bathroom changed a little bit, configuration, uh, we did just go through and and mark up all the, uh. Outlets and data, make sure, you know, so what what I've asked the project manager, is go in the classrooms, take pictures of all the classrooms, every every wall, every angle. And then we can see where teachers are sitting, again, it's it's another new learning curve, I have it down at the high schools. Now it's new learning curve for the lower grades, like, and you'll see, they they all wanna sit next to the windows. Every one of those classrooms, when you go through the pictures, they're all sitting next to the window, so, I want, and I know that's probably continued, because everybody likes the light, but. So we're gonna make sure we have data of power right there, no trip hazards or anything like that, so. And then. This is the the backside of the existing building, you can see, we're gonna have some operable windows. Right, it's, so so it's not all air conditioned, if you wanna know from the. Again. Wrong sized desks, students, that's why we don't put them in there, but it gives you a visual. Moving on, any questions for number one, Delmar? Delmar, monitor, pretty straightforward, right, you've seen this one before, modular will go here. It's the same modular we just looked at, at, at Bishop's Peak. You know, cleaning up these these rooms, not a lot of work, moving the sink outside the restroom. Uh, doing these restrooms is is the biggest project there, I would say, vetting those down and nothing and rebuilding those. The issue we're having there right now is water pressure. And so the fire, the the calculations are low. And so, so we we actually bought a data logger, plugged it in, and now we can see like. Is it every day?
Every fifteen minutes.
Yeah, about every day it dropped, right?
Uh, at least once a day.
Once a day, the water pressure would drop, like, super low.
What's that?
Well, we had, we had moral bay out there and out of the fire, and everybody just seemed to shrug their shoulders. Right, so there's certain pressures that you can keep in order to get through DSA, so the question now is, the next meeting is with the fire department, I can say. How do you want us to handle this, right, like, it's not, we can't control the water pressure when it drops, one day it dropped three times?
Four times.
So, drops super low, right, it's supposed to be up like seventy, eighty, you correct me if I'm wrong, seventy, eighty, uh, PSA. And then drop down to, what, thirty, forty?
It was actually one thirty.
Oh, there we go.
Between a hundred and one thirty, and it dropped down to about forty.
Alright, so, that's out of our control, but we can't submit to DSA till we have a solution, or the fire department signs off on. They they understand the water pressure as well, right, and we just did this this data logger at Moral Bay High School, so. We've gotten everything through Moral Bay, so, sounds like they must be aware of this issue. But, new architect, new project, we're gonna have to go through the same process again, check with fire department, put the site off. If they don't, then we're gonna come up with a different solution. Again, this is the existing one, big thing here, moving the sink out here, make it easier, keep kids in and out. Pressuring up these restrooms. Uh, new carpet, new tile, you know, make sure electrical down is where it should be. There's not a lot that has to happen through them, it's just it's fresh enough, you know, new tack board, no read, no no major reconfigurations or anything. Again, this is, you know, the same layout we've been looking at. For the modular. Any questions for moving on, Monarch? Okay, am I going too slow, too fast, too much?
No, it's okay.
Alright, cheers. Alright, so, Monarch, again, modular is back here, we're gonna demo those two, old portables, get those out of there. Uh, the other big project here is adding air condition and roofs, and fixing some of the windows and the MPR. That's that's a pretty big undertaking, to figure out how to add those condensers, because all these furnaces are up in the ceiling, in a crawl space. Making that connection, making it work with minimal, minimal disruption, so we're still working that out, and then when you look at the roofs. There's a lot of roofs, because those roofs are all big and peaked, so, more surface area, but they need to be done. And same, just.
Um, are you adding that central air to Monarch?
Yes.
To all the campuses, right?
All the campuses, yes. Hawthorne.
Yeah.
Pictures for Hawthorne. So, we've we've, we've had many discussions with the architect on this one, trying to keep that neighborhood feel. And make it feel like it fits in there, so this is kinda where we're getting it, right, change it, brighten the color up a little bit. This whole new ADA access walkway needs to be redone, or or bring you all the way up to the main office level, because right now it doesn't. And that's a lot of concrete, right, bringing up there, and. I really like this layout, this, I mean, I, we have a lot of, lot of discussions back and forth. And every time that they finally brought the designers here, because every time, I'm like, nope, 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 not working, then. We got it down to a few, and then, as we collaborate, and, like, this starts the feel, right, this looks good, it looks clean, yes, Mark.
Is is, so is this the bike storage?
Yes, and we'll move the bike storage over by the MPR.
You will?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, without, this is not bike storage.
Okay, good, okay, good.
Right, and then also in front of this, uh. We'll clean this up more too, get get all these trees off the building, clean, because that right now is kinda dirty and that's sealed up. Uh, what we're, what we're avoiding though is redoing this this retaining wall, because that's that's a pretty big deal, so. Everything's kind of based off there going this way, and then not having to rebuild over here on the left side. Right? So this switchback, you know, goes all of this, all the way there. So here's, existing building, what you're missing here is the ornamental fence. But when we replace the windows, we did ask if we could open, take that middle section out of those windows, but that is a structural piece. So unfortunately, we're gonna have to leave it, do new windows in between, we're gonna do, you know, aluminum, very bright. Long lasting, same with the doors, it just lighten the whole building up with with the accent of of the blue for their backpack hooks. For their their logo color that has blue in it. This has been a lot, another one that we're s- we're still working through. But add a, add some textured color in there, seems to be kind, we've had several different iterations. So we're still working through it, the gray is also their logo. And don't want it to look so, we want it to look timeless, but fits, so we're still working through this. MPR, right, add that accent here also. Not too much, this is a tough building, this one, this area is really tough, because it's already dark. In there, and they wanted to add an accent of gray in the other area, but it's already dark. So we're still working through this one, I'm just afraid if we do gray, it's gonna feel even darker. So it might, might be where we add an accent on the upper part of the building or something, but we're still working through that.
Is the?
Yeah.
Was there any discussion, um, ADA access from this area?
Yes, next picture.
Thank you.
So, the stairs that went to nowhere.
Yeah.
Alright, so this now. ADA style, you gotta have that, big air, big ramp to get down there, but we also have the cut through on the stairs. Right, and this was a couple iterations too, but this one actually is a good portion in this planner. So, we're not losing a lot of space underneath there. We have the ramp over on this side, and then you kinda kinda intrude it in under the canopy area, but closing it in, so. This seems to be the best iteration at this point, and all the numbers work, as far as ramps, lakes and all that good stuff.
So do we need the elevator?
Elevators for the building.
Okay, so this one.
So build in the elevators to get to the second floor of the building. This is the kitchen, we're moving the staff room upstairs in the in classroom. We've been going through the kitchen. So we're still working through some details of that. As you can see, this is the three, uh. This is right now is the staff room right here, the I innovate room that's gonna move, and this layout, the blue is carpet versus hard floor. And Dave went over and met with, met with the site, taught teach, this is kinda where we ended, so. Uh, getting their input, they're excited. So this is the second floor, this is where the staff room's going. I innovate room is gonna move up top. We're adding a restroom in the staff room. Because, I'm gonna back up real quick, we're adding a restroom down here, because this this room doesn't have one. So, since that room is right above you, let's add a restroom right above, right? So. Okay. Uh, this, this is the restrooms that are gonna be done in the other building, Hawthorne. Problem here is, once you hit the ADA upgrade, they're losing quite a few stalls, so, we met with the site, just to make them aware, like. You you have a restroom right now, that's four, it's gonna be down to two, you have one that's three, it's gonna be down to one. It's significant, because they're small, meet that ADA.
And they're highly impacted.
Yeah, so, they they say they can make it work, so, uh, but as far as ADA, we don't have a choice on that. Let's see. This site plan, right, here's the MPR, the grass areas right here on the left, we're gonna put the childcare. Right on the edge of the grass. Bike storage on that side. That way, it can separate all the traffic, the people that come in the bus, they can go right there, and we got gates and locks on that. Principal wants to be able to lock the bikes up, so the kids don't go use them during recess. This will be good for childcare, because they'll have their own gate in and out. Nice, easy, infrastructure wise, sewer trains go right through here, excellent. Request from the site was to add some trees along here, so we'll add some trees. My other plan is to add some, uh, concrete planters for the, for their garden, right now their garden's out here, kinda tucked away. While we're here, we add concrete planters, let the garden grow the things out here, give them a better space. Instead of tucked behind, they like that idea, so. Again, that was the ramp you were looking at, couple pictures back.
Ask a question, Chris?
Yeah.
This is General Talde Elementary Schools, and do we have designs or intentions to include solar in any elementary schools? And maybe secondarily, if we don't, is there a bottom where we put solar batteries someday if we wanted to?
So, at this point, what we're, what we're doing is, if DSA is making us do the solar, because like at beach, we have to.
Right.
And then we have to do battery backup, but we've been skirting that edge right now of, uh, do we have to or don't have to, so. Open topic, really, to be honest.
So is our general goal to only do what we're required?
Yeah, at this point, okay. I don't have a conversation about that.
Sure. There's some regulatory changes that will make it far less profitable to submit solar after next February. And so, it might, you know, make sense to sidebar on that.
Good.
Sorry, less profitable to what, right?
To the school district. Meaning, the rates that you can. The rate that they'll give you credit for on your bill is gonna decrease, so, today you can give your, whatever, if the cost twenty five cents kilowatt hour. For for energy now, the solar can offset that, and there's changes that will make it so that you get more like seven cents instead of twenty five cents.
That'll make it as much of an incentive, right?
Yeah.
It's a.
It's a. So the financial return of investing in solar will drop dramatically next year, potentially. And so, if there's ever a thought that eight years from now, maybe we put solar in on three years. Um, planning for it now may have some benefit for the school district.
Well, I think there's, there's a. Financial return on solar, and there's also a, um, well, more return, yeah.
Yeah. The two words, two tend to. Work together, yeah.
Yeah, definitely, I definitely agree with you that both are.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Any questions so far?
Ask, another question? Is there any demand from, uh, staff or bottom EV charging?
Solution to that, I am doing.
Okay.
So, whether it's phase one or phase two, we're kind of, we're going back and forth. We've kind of, we've kind of figured out which charging system now to use, and we're finding locations, there's some requirements that we just found out at. At Laguna. Remember the numbers?
Yeah.
Tell me.
Six, six, forgive me, six for a Laguna that we have to put in with twenty five spots ready. So, you have to put in six, you have to put in enough infrastructure. So you have to put in six, you have to put in enough infrastructure for twenty five. You don't have to put power in it or chargers or anything else, but you just have to be ready for twenty five.
You have to dedicate.
You gotta have, basically, when when we put those six in, the rest of those spaces to get to twenty five, we'll have to run a conduit in there, ready. The stuff up if we do, if we have to add more, basically.
So the the big tank farm, tank farm in Broad, there's a big center that's probably gonna come on the market for renting, do you remember the name of that? Location, the Chevron gas station is right there.
The Maribor Center?
No, across Catawba Corner to Maribor, was a big, it was a tech company.
Oh, mine.
Mine, yeah, so interestingly, they have charging stations that I think serve four parking spaces out of one pedestal. Just mentioning, it's an interesting thing.
Yeah, we've, because of the bus grant with the, you know, ten other electric buses that we've been allotted. The one electric bus we have now, we're, Rick is learning a lot on chargers and we taught chargers once a week.
Okay.
Right, it's it's, there's a lot to it, it's not, now I finally got my. Sumo, I'm not as good as Rick right now, but I, the gist of them, and then really is because we put them in the sites, we gotta have, you know. The software to be able to charge people, you know, or to manage that that piece, right, because it's public and then there's. There's a district and right now, we don't have any district vehicles, which I was just talking about today. Start getting a couple little runner cars or something to plug in, but. Yeah, there's there's a lot to it, you know, I don't want to lock this in one brand, we want an open source brand, so we can change. And then the size, whether it's multiple one pedestal, or is it like, last week was this November third, the Friday. Because we were trying to figure out where we're gonna put all these chargers and where we put the electric buses. So literally had a whole crew in there, they rearranged all the buses, we, I did a plan, I cut out little buses and we played with them on the paper. Right, and then we went out and tried it in the yard, right, and they they lined them all up, like, where is it gonna be most efficient for me to put all these pedestals? Right, so, uh, because we have ten electric buses, you know, it's forty feet plus the pedestal and area and ballers, they gotta be able to back up. Right, there was some organization that we had to lay out, because PG&E's all you're allowed to do is once. Right, you know, and then for us, there's making sure we're picking ones that aren't now chapter, uh. Chapter seven, chapter eleven?
Chapter eleven.
Proterra, right, one of the ones that we were gonna give, you know, they've filed, so now we had to regroup. And we're going off of PG&E's list, that doesn't match the list that everybody given it. It's a lot of work, hats off to Rick, because he's been in it and. Yeah, it's a lot of work, just trying to figure out that piece.
Can we can we charge people for using the chargers?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so we have, we can do tier, the whole, the whole purpose of the open source is, right? We we can leave the chargers there and they come up and swipe their car, or they have an account, we understand it, we can set different rates. So like if it was if it was our vehicle pulls up, we swipe our car and and plug in, we're good. Because the big picture for me, like I mentioned before, for moving all these electric buses, I need to start thinking about. The superchargers at the high schools. Because if they're coming from Fresno, they're not gonna make it back home in electric bus, so they need to be able to plug in and then we can charge them.
So we can charge Fresno?
Yes.
So it might.
So I, I mean, that's 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 what I think, nobody's really talking about this, but that's what we're gonna need to do.
So what were the solutions that you selected, you said you've selected?
Where'd we end up, Rick?
In what aspect? Which chargers, I assume fleet charging and individual car charging are different solutions? Definitely. So, Chris was saying that we picked a partner for each, or is that?
Well, it's the open source piece, not a, not a proprietary.
Okay.
Pedestal, right, so that pedestal, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but not being a proprietary pedestal allows us to to pick. An open source type of software to run and charge and that's, you know, charge whatever charges.
So does that mean you can charge a Tesla and you can charge a. A Chevy Bolt?
So I believe, I don't have an electric car, I'm a diesel guy, but I believe chargers have, Teslas have a different end, you can put on it and plug into a one of the pedestal.
I believe the spirit of the open source would be more though, like if you bought chargers from one company and they went out of business, you're not out of luck. Because you can no longer use that.
Yes.
Hardware, is that what you're getting at?
Yes.
It sounds like. Versus, there are different adapters, like for different types of cars.
Yes, and then, you know, like the chargers are are different sizes, you know, there's there's different size in the charger, which means how fast car charges. So like we still don't have our our main charger in for the electric bus that we took us two years to get. But in the middle of all this, we we installed a small little charger, at least to charge the bus. And that's what's keeping us going right now, otherwise we'd have a brick in the driveway, because PG&E still hasn't done their upgrade for us yet. To do the charger for the bus, so it takes eight hours to charge, charge that bus.
When is this a super? Do you have a super?
Well, the, so PG&E only allot you so many, uh, so much electricity allowed, right? Before you start having to upgrade transformers and whether or not their line's gonna handle it, like, there there's, it's a lot more to it than people understand. Like I said, Rick, Rick has has got it pretty figured out, so.
So Tesla's going on open source.
Like I said, I'm dealing with.
So Chris?
So Brian?
Yes.
I just want, let me just, we still have the English Language Arts Adoption presentation that we wanna get to. This is really exciting and interesting.
Maybe it's still in discussion.
But Mark, you have a question that you've been trying to ask.
I mean, just just right somewhere that, I think he was about to answer to the provider's, sorry, mine. So right now basis of design is ABV ICE or equivalent, right? We're a district, you're looking for equivalents, but so you have to come up with a basis of design. And then the open source concept, um, big picture, we're looking at all of the schools. The last thing you'd wanna do is have one charger and a proprietary software at Monarch. And a different one at San Luis High. So the open source part of it is, if we're gonna get one, they could all talk, and our transportation supervisor, Philip. He can talk to all of them, instead of having individual fire alarms at different schools that won't talk to each other and one goes off and you don't know. So that's part of the spirit of open source.
So this, we could, we could talk another two hours, just.
I can ask questions offline too.
So, so my just, my last, is there's a social aspect of this as well? Because somebody gets in there and the cars are all day.
Okay, so we have, we have a solution.
That's fine, I just laid it out.
The solution is, because we don't, that was my concern.
Yeah.
The software will say, hey, you just got a text or an email, your car's done charging, if you don't move in the next fifteen minutes, you get charged.
Good.
For every, every ten minutes that you're you're sitting there, you're, so you're getting charged. So that is, because that's my concern, if it's a teacher and they plug in and they leave the car all day, right? What about others, so, yes, we brought that up.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll I'll try to pick up pace here.
So Chris?
Yes.
How much time do you think you're gonna need?
Uh, let's see, um. About halfway down, but Pack Beach goes quicker, just so you know, it's pictures.
I promise no more questions.
Okay, so, so.
Lunch is gonna be heard about twelve forty-five, but some of us have to leave around one thirty.
Yeah, no, okay, so I'm wondering, Chris, could, um, could you finish up in in ten minutes?
I can go as fast as you want.
Why don't we do, I'd be really interested in Baywood for sure. And maybe Pack Beach.
So, so Baywood, Baywood is pretty much.
Know what I'm saying, and then come back, that's what I'm doing.
Well, I can tell you, for Baywood right now, there's nothing.
Okay.
So Baywood is pretty much on hold, just because we're waiting for Pack Beach. To get that that bid for those for those buildings, because once we understand what those stick built buildings cost us that are size the same as a modular. And we have our modular prices, then we can come back to Baywood and talk about. The next steps of, are we doing modular, are we doing stick built at Baywood? And then we'll dive more into those schematic designs and come up with a plan. So that's, we're really, that's kind of on hold for us until we know those numbers from Pack Beach. And that was delivered, we we've been saying that from the start, so we have accurate numbers, because we're not convinced some of our neighbors, those numbers are as accurate as we think they are. And after just recently, just a couple days ago, conversation with a contractor, he thinks we're gonna be, they're gonna be really close, you know, probably wanted to stick it. What his suggestion thought was, so, but we'll see, like I said, that's that's.
Interesting.
Because it's a lot, it's a lot of money, so we might as well make sure we fully understand the costs of both products. Before we make a make a decision, and then then there's that whole design process of this.
So we have about two minutes per cycle, yeah.
Yeah, either either we go that way, or Chris?
Yep.
We can maybe come back.
Yeah.
And take the time to go through the others.
I'll do whatever you want.
So it's the, it's up to the board, how would you like that, um, would you like him to to do that way, or, um. Or do you, would you like me to, um, you wanna do a fly fly through the couple minutes a pop, or do you wanna?
I'd like to do a fly through.
A fly through?
And and if you're not, you know, if you want, we're we're gonna come back to this anyway, so.
I could always get me individually too, I'd be more than happy to do that too, right?
So, Chris, fly.
Fly, alright, here we go.
Okay, wait a minute, you took one vote.
Okay, okay, I'm just looking at everybody, just trying to.
Okay, I'm just feeling really strongly that these are designed as measure C and D study sessions. And if other things are tapped on, and other academic things are tapped on, they're tapped on to measure C and D study sessions. So I don't feel that they should get short shrift. Opinion of one.
Okay, so what's the board's pleasure?
I'd like to go through two minutes apiece and then if we have to come back to something, you can come back.
I personally, I'd rather reschedule this, we're just getting into the, we just, we're getting into secondaries.
Yeah.
And I, you know, we've got other, you know, we could do, if we had it, we could do ten minutes next Thursday, I mean, I'd just rather reschedule it.
Well, that's.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm.
So I just wanna go down the line here, so Rob.
I wouldn't mind having another study session on this, that's my hope.
Chris?
Yeah, I I'm with Rob, I think we have too many questions about this and. Um, what I think Lisa has to show us really is is equally important, even though I understand the wrongs.
Brian?
Um, I would prefer the fly through approach combined with Chris identifying areas where he thinks he needs feedback or input. Because I guess I'm generally the opinion that he knows forty times more about this than me, and so, um. Rather provide it where needed on a condensed form.
Like I was just, I wanted to make sure he'd answer.
Yeah, no, and I really appreciate it, this is all really interesting to all of us, um, you know, so. Um, let's touch each one and then see, you'll be here, you know, while we grab our lunch and we, you know, have more questions. I understand what Carolyn's saying and I appreciate it, this is really important, it's an enormous amount of money that we are responsible for.
Look at what's left, this will be very, pretty quick, right, it's. Like, we're at Los, uh, Los Socios right now.
And I, and I wanna be really clear, but we, we can, um, schedule additional measure C and D study sessions too. Knowing this is a big, there's a lot of information to take out of there, so I can sit and and work through that as well.
And I appreciate that, but we'll be further down the road, less chance for our input to have any value, so I just, I.
And an awareness of work schedules for those of us.
Yeah.
Who work during the day, so. Okay, so Socios Middle School, we can have this discussion.
Yeah.
So what's my direction?
Um, hit it.
Alright, Los Socios Middle, so. Moving forward on that, of course, you know, the the ADA ramps are gonna be revamped, the stairs down to the below level. Restrooms, of course, same conversation that we're having at Laguna, they're they're pretty much identical. So we're working through that, the big thing here, I'll say, is the new office layout. Right, so I'm gonna zoom in on one end so you can see it. So right now, you come in right here, right? We're gonna move that, we're gonna add add a double door out here.
On the street.
On the, on the main sidewalk, right? Good, wraparound counter, open feeling. So then there'll be a security fence right here. Right, so you have to check in and then you can go out into campus. Okay? We went through, I think this, we went through three or four iterations with Carl and his staff. And this is, this is kind of where we ended up. So we have office here, counselor, counselor, nurses station here. This, uh, station here, it's a little small, uh. Storage, you can put pile cabinets, whatever you want there. And we're utilizing the restrooms in the same locations, they'll get, they'll get modernized. But the save on costs and plumbing and everything, they're in the same spot, so we're adding a door here to make the nurses restroom. Again, office, and what we're trying to do is, since these are all block walls, it's hard to add add windows. So we're at least giving a window to the office, so you don't feel like you're a complete box, right? As we move, sorry. Uh, as we move down the hall, you're good perspective. So principal's office is here, vice principal's here, their secretaries are here. But notice there's no wall, and to try to keep this open and not feel like so much like a hole, you have that line of sight all the way down through here. Let me see here. So, you know, this is a cubby for the the mail slots, but you can see all the way down, you can see who comes in. Office, since this is a small little room, we're thinking, you know, there are queue files and storage, that's, doesn't need a window. Conference room, they want it. Vice principal's area, principal's area has his own door to get out, right, there's already a window here. We're gonna see if we can add a window, maybe, maybe not, we'll see how that that goes. But this field, you know, down the hall here is a lot like slow, uh. Slow student services. Uh, building, so it's a lot of glass, so you can see in, but you know, we know that we learned now, the glass will get frosted partway up, so there's some privacy, but. As an adult, you walk through, you can see over a little bit, but you still have, students will have the privacy. Work room, break room in here, again, get away of the wall here, so you can see all the way down, mailroom, copiers, IT. So this was version three, this is the one they they landed on, sorry, doesn't all fit in here, but.
So the the principal and vice principals offices, uh, face the calling?
Yeah.
Am I oriented right?
Yeah, so it's a complete flip flop from where they are now.
So those offices that have very, uh, that we are concerned about the lack of light, try and think about the. Roof there, I know the roof's gonna be replaced, is is there any possibility of putting skylights in for those areas?
Uh, skylights, we don't like skylights.
We don't like them?
We don't like skylights.
Well.
It's roof penetrations, right, so, so that's the source of ninety percent of our leaks. Right, it's great for a few years, but after the sun beats on and, you know. I'd like to say regular maintenance is always done, but it's not, cop can breaks down and then it leaks through the skylights. So that we, I'm a I'm an anti-skylightist, as much as I'd love to have extra light, it's long term maintenance issues. And when it starts leaking, and by the time you catch up with it, like, who knows where it's spread, so, yeah, no. But that's, that's kind of consensus.
Yeah, I know it's hard to chase those leaks, um, it it's also hard to sit in a room where you don't have natural light.
Understood, I'm not disagreeing with you. And we'll have more information once the wind, like, they're talking to the structural, what exactly can we do to these walls too? If we can open these windows up a little bit more, that'd be great, right?
Chris, if you scroll, this is the first time I've seen this iteration, if you scroll down to the vice principal's office. Um, is there a, um, I don't see a door out of the vice principal's office. You know, that's gonna be an issue. Um, you know, that's gonna be an issue, if the vice principal has to go through the principal's office to get out to the hallway. Or has to walk all the way through to the front to get out, your vice principal's gonna need quick access to hallways, I would think. That's gonna be an issue. So just as a immediate thought.
Yeah, for sure. So originally, what, how we had this too, we had, there's the line here, and then this was all principals. But Carl made the change, he wanted to give vice principal more space, but I hear you on the door, it, it's the structural piece, right, that's kind of the unknown at this point. That's, that's, with these block walls, where are they gonna let us do to them?
Yeah, it's just, that's gonna be, right off the bat, that's gonna be an issue.
Made a note.
Yeah.
Can there be a door down at the very bottom there? So, so you can come through the conference room and into the, a door to the.
Are you talking here?
Principal's office door away from the, yeah, the very bottom wall.
Down here?
Yeah, a door there, uh, well, actually, the interior wall to lead to the principal's office, and out there.
So you're saying go through here?
I, yeah, just as one.
But then you're, then you're, you're walking into the principal's office.
Uh, yeah, emergency is what I'm thinking.
That's the deal, so, uh, at this point.
Yeah.
We'll get the structural to get back to us, and.
Yeah.
It's doing a, to keep the progress going here.
Yeah.
Uh, again, this is just restrooms, there's nothing, nothing really to talk about, they're just not compliant. And they're still working through the design, they'll, they'll change a little bit, probably one less stall, doors will change. Um, custodial room, we've changed the type of toilets we're doing, so there's no need for chases anymore, that'll make the restrooms a little bit bigger. Again, that's just restrooms. Fence, have they started loans yet? No?
No, 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 that's one of the last ones.
So, haven't done the fence yet out at loan, so that's coming. Sinsheimer, some, there's some news here, there's some good stuff here. Again, as we work through with the architect, ADA spaces, how many we need, this, that's an ongoing thing right now, because right now, they've added. This picture doesn't show, but they added three more ADA spaces, which means you lose a lot more space out front. And so I got some concern with that, we're trying to come up with a solution, because there's also ADA across the street. So here's the, the layout, so this is what's gonna happen here, so childcare right now is gonna change to staff room. I can zoom in so you can see better, we'll change to staff room, which will give them easy access right here, it's great. Cabinets, stove, refrigerators, all down this one wall. Nice big room, easy, we're gonna add a door into the actual workroom, so they can come through, go in staff room, go out, there's all kinds of options to get in and out. All the restrooms are gonna be modernized, the configuration will change a little bit to meet the new codes. Again, these restrooms, we're still working through, through this configuration, there's some concern whether or not we had to add another saint or not, and what heights, so. We're still working through that. This will be the outdoor space, that'll get the shade structure. Same here, right, have a little, you know, four-foot fence enough to kind of designate it as that space, so you, your, your runners just don't run easily, slows them down. All this pa, all this walkway down the middle will, uh, it's a lot of ADA work, all that's coming up, so. Uh, they got solutions, it looks, it looks good, it's gonna look a lot like, uh, teach, since it's the same school, same layout.
You might want to consider changing the name of reading recovery rooms to something else, since we don't use that anymore.
Do catch.
See if that makes any difference.
Again, same, same drawings, still room.
It's a room, it's a room, it's a room.
So this currently is, is the staff room.
Oh, okay.
Uh, this will change into childcare, and we're currently, there's one restroom right here, so. We're gonna split this into two restrooms, one restroom's for food service, and one restroom's for childcare. So, uh, we have to expand the wall a little bit into the room, but I don't think it's gonna be very intrusive, it'll work, we're gonna keep the same cabinets there. Disconnect the, the stove, so we accidentally turn it on, slide their hand across, anything like that. But we're gonna leave the cabinets, everything, we'll do the carpet, clean it up, but that's pretty much gonna stay the same. You've seen these drawings before, we're working, still working through the, the shade structure itself, but um, there's Rick, right there. Still working through the classroom, don't like the pendant lights, want the lights up high. Two reasons, one is, you have all these guide wires they make people with, so they don't swing, that's one. Two is clean.
Yes.
When they hang, whenever you walk, you can see hanging pendants, there's dust on it, or cobwebs, and architect wants a low, like, I gotta think long-term. Right, with them up high, plus a room with all those windows, and up high, it'll just give a lot more light. So, that was a conversation a couple hours ago. Baywood, again, we, we've talked about Baywood, uh, let's just come at, we're waiting, we're waiting for Pat Beach. Alright, Pat Beach, making really good progress on this, this is the first set of plans that everybody's looked at, from. Our staff, to all the project managers, to DSA, inspector, Gary Geary, myself, Jeremy has put his eyes on it for tech. It's, we're, we're real close on this one, this is gonna be good.
Where are the bathrooms on this one?
Bathrooms on this one.
The end of the building?
There's two right here.
Yeah. So on the other, on the other modular.
General control, right there. Uh, nurses gets one, and then there's a staff one.
I appreciate, so on the end of the modular building to the left, you have the bathrooms, and so you have another modular site where we moved the restrooms to the end of the building. And we're worried about the integrated, is there no reason the other building can't have restrooms that are literally part of the building?
Well, again, it's a dollar threshold to separate seismic upgrade. We're talking about me adding on that.
Yeah, I'm just talking about getting the mission to be buildings delivered with this type of bathroom at the end of it.
We talked about, yeah, we talked about that, but there, there's more to that story.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks.
So, this, this field's gonna change a little bit, we're gonna shorten this down a little bit, then we have to do the swale for runoff. You know, it's like six feet deep, it's big for all the water to run to. So it's gonna take up some of the field, I'm gonna tell you right now, there's a lot of trees that gotta come down to make this happen. Uh, I'm not gonna show you that red dotted diagram, but there's a lot of trees, but what the, the new code now makes us have to add so many trees back for. Covering all the, all the asphalt, so there's like, there's some calculation to do, we're, you know, ten to fifteen years has to cover fifty percent of the asphalt. I, I might have that a little off, but there's a lot more trees that won't be planted back, so that's why I need to.
I agree with that.
We will, we will plant a lot of trees back, because not only, uh, trees be planted all through here, we'll plant them back down here, around that swale. And probably down this route to separate, so give the privacy.
Is that swale comparably sized to the one at Baywood?
It's gonna be bigger. Yeah. The only other option is to put, they said we can put underground tanks for it to run into, so, and that just sounds super costly, so. We're gonna make it work over there, they changed the shape of it, right, it was kind of more of a roundish ovalish, now they're stretching it. So we keep it tucked out, you try to get them to say, why, just, there's a creek right there, it all drains into, why didn't you just let it go in the creek? Now they won't let us do that, so.
Just talk to the coast team here about underground tanks.
So, you know, like, they put a lot of trees behind here, but, uh. We've gone through this, this, I'm feeling real confident about this plan, this is coming together. I'm keeping the, uh, the trees, the red trees, that one was caught over there, so I can keep those. Yes.
That's beautiful.
Again, this quad's gonna look nice, you know, very low planters, so there's no skateboards, whatever, the turrets on those curbs. And rocks and low, you know, low slopes, uh, irrigation. Science room, looks like a lot of our science room, again, like I said, T-bar ceiling, keeps this room nice and clean, concrete floors.
And I'm so excited for these kids, it's gonna be beautiful.
Teach, not much to discuss at teach, other than fence, where, where are we at, fence to teach? Couple weeks, teach is a couple weeks out, couple weeks out, so, there, there it is, that's the end.
Any questions for Chris?
A lot, thank you, yeah, thank you, thanks very much.
Thank you for coming. Yeah?
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, you guys.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
For sure. Feel confident, I'm confident in our team, we're, we're already really into it, it's gonna be a good, successful program.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris, thanks for this.
Thanks, so, I would propose, you know, our lunch is gonna be here at twelve forty-five. So I don't know if you wanna take a break now, I mean, we don't need to do a working, well, I mean, everyone can stay as long as they want, I believe, that doesn't mean you're just. Processively, but you know, we're not voting on anything, we can go, and certainly continue. So, um, you know, so you wanna?
You wanna just get started now, and?
Yeah, is that alright, then we'll break when, when lunch arrives, then you'll let, you know.
Okay.
Is that, is that okay with everyone? Yeah, it's gonna take another minute to get settled, right?
Good morning.
Morning, it's not morning.
It is.
Afternoon, we landed on afternoon.
We've been, we've been after, we've been at this since morning, so, uh, so Stephanie and Chelsea, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so, Lisa, would you like to introduce?
I would be happy to, I, I think one of the questions on Mrs. Shepherd's, um, mind is related to timing. So is their goal going to be to finish at one, or is their goal going to be go an hour of land until one thirty? Because that will dictate how quickly they move through slides, or they could do half the presentation. And we could move the other half.
Yeah.
To the next appointed time, but I think they're gonna need some help with direction, whether with the board.
Want her to give them their full amount of time that they feel they need to be, be comprehensive?
We had prepared for about an hour-long presentation, which was gonna provide opportunity for the board to interact and ask questions, and, and also some just that alone, and I'm kind of.
It's, it's, it's not.
It goes to one of my.
I can always talk, so.
Yeah, my schedule should not dictate a board's schedule.
And Ellen, um, and Chris, Mr. Bonner? We have, um, we have an action item for the, the loans lease, leaseback, we should do that, and, um.
Thank you.
That's right.
Trying to be professional, and then I also need to ask for, um, for public comment on the last, well, let's do. Is anyone, maybe, does anyone from the public have a comment? And we don't often, we don't do that.
No, not, you mean for, um, the previous presentation?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, so we do have an action item, yeah, no, I do too, I'm, I'm. Okay.
I just, I just closed everything out, so, bear with me here, so, again, we're bringing you the, uh, lease, leaseback contract for loans. Uh, great turnout, lots of contract, our, full game of contract, everybody that showed up, fit. Uh, it would say, uh, it was a tie, which is very unusual in this type of process, but it was literally a tie. So, uh, came down to the Wyson construction and new construction. In our, in our BQ, there's, there's documentation says, in the case of a tie, the district gets to choose.
Oh, so you did.
So we chose, we chose Wyson, and that was strictly just because we have a pre, previous relationship with him. He's done a lot of our projects to measure D, uh, and we just feel confident that he'll, he'll do a great job, so. That being said, the percentages are super low, like, I keep having conversations with different contractors, they're, they're just amazed that they're that low, so. Good for us, definitely good for us, um, so, like I said earlier, the tighter our plans are, less change orders, we can stretch this bond even further, so. That being said.
So, so first, I need, is that, first I need to go to the public and see if anyone from the public has any questions or comments on the item?
There's no public comment.
Thank you, and then back to the board for questions or comments?
I just have one.
Oh, and then Brian just also.
I, I'm wondering if, um, I know that Wyson is, is known to us, and they have performed really well for us in the past, they have received some other projects. So would you anticipate that, that getting loans puts them up against, um, committed full-on capacity? Or would you anticipate that they can continue to bid additional projects?
Why do you ask that? Because I ran into Wyson two mornings ago, driving down the street, and we talked about bidding. So, he is not gonna take on any more right now, just because he has, he has a couple of the big projects, and then he, he wants to continue work for us, and he doesn't want it to. Come back on him as not being able to perform, right, so he's very conscious of what projects he can take and the size of the project, so.
So you put it there?
Yes, it is, it's sort of just like RSH two, you know, they, they didn't bid this time, they're, they're bonded out at this, at the moment, right? And they're, they all wanna do a good job for us, so, they're not over committing at this point, which is good, ones we're seeing.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
I have two questions, one is, um, so, so two contractors both bid ten point seven percent, is it ten point seven percent of the same amount for sure, or like, one of them?
They literally write it in, um, when they turn in their documents.
But like, so, what is, one is ten point seven percent of a million dollars versus ten point seven percent of one, one million dollars, and the dollar amounts are different, I'm just misunderstanding that, or the costs are fixed, the same?
This is fixed, it's a fixed cost, so. There shouldn't be a fluctuation, so when they, maybe we're not clear where you're.
I mean, we just look at them as their percent, it's ten point seven percent of the construction cost. Um, right, so.
And reconstruction, so it's all grouped into one.
Well, so I'll give you an example, let's say Chris bids ten percent, and I bid twelve percent, but my project's five hundred thousand dollars, and his is eight hundred thousand dollars, he's actually charging more money, but a lower percentage.
So in, in our BQ, there is a dollar amount for that project, but.
Okay, so it's on the same amount?
Yeah, they're, they're basing up all the same amount.
Alright, so my second question might be mildly annoying, but the way this reads in the fee proposal, it says if you have a tie, they're supposed to be awarded the average of the two sections. It seems like the points should be ninety-five to ninety-five to eighty to seventy to sixty to fifty to forty, instead of what we have, which I don't think changes our outcome, but. We should put the right points in, am I, am I making any sense?
Uh, you know what, I'll have to go back and look at that.
I think it creates a bigger gap with Edwards, it, technically, the gap with Edwards should be greater, but, um, uh. I'm being, I guess that's kind of an annoying question, I just think if we have a tie in the future, we should make sure.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll go back and look at that.
Oh, for sure. And if we need to, I mean, do we need to fix up before we approve something like this, or?
I don't know.
You can, you could approve it pending the, with, with the understanding that we're gonna.
Pending eighty-five, to put the eighty-five points in there instead of ninety-five.
Change five days.
That'd be eighty-five, eighty-five, and then the next year we get an eighty, not ninety-five.
Yeah, I, I can correct that.
Again, it's a fairly annoying question.
Yeah, but, you know, it's important, those are important details, by the way.
Okay.
So it'd be approving, assuming that we make those.
We mentioned question based on eighty-five, eighty-five, Dow.
And then how does it, how does it change the ones after that?
Bill drop ten.
Oh, by ten.
I'm gonna make a note right now, or not.
So, Brian?
Yeah.
I have a request then, because you, you worded that, you, you know, would you?
I worded that as annoying?
No, 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 I think it's important, would you make the motion?
Oh, sure.
I mean, uh, including that change?
Okay, I'd like to make an emotion that we approve this award pending, um, adjustment of the. Okay, I'd like to make an emotion that we approve this award pending, um, adjustment of the section to fee proposal calculation, um, which will change the point totals, but will not change the order of outcome of the candidates.
Excellent. My apologies, oh, I'll make sure, like I said, this is rare that it actually happens.
It's like an exception case, yeah.
Okay, so then I have a motion by Mr. Clausen, a second.
I'll say.
Okay, so, okay, um, Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Banfield?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mrs. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Buckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hinton?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner, thanks, Chris.
And, um. Mandy, I made notes, make something to you, thank you for that reminder, everybody who reminded me that we have something else that they needed to take care of. Um, lunch is here, uh, is it timed okay, can we take ten minutes and please bring it back here, and so we can begin on our next session? Talking, is that alright?
I'll split my sandwich with you guys.
Okay, so it's next door, lunch is next door. Ellen, what can?
I can absolutely. Yes, I can absolutely hear you, I just can't see you, so if you could maybe start the video and we can get the meeting going here. Okay, hold on just one moment. I'm gonna ask it to start the video, and Stephanie, I'm just gonna stop your sharing for a moment so I can make sure, there we go, we're working.
Okay.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank, thank you, those of us on, those of you on Zoom who have stuck with us, I know it's been a long, um, a long, boring week.
You won't need anything in the folder until we say you'll need things in the folder.
Okay. So we're now working on, off our agenda for our elementary, like, English and Language Arts topic, and we have Chelsea smiling, Stephanie Shepherd here, welcome.
Thank you, alright, we're excited to share, um, quite a bit of information with the board today. Uh, we'll dive right in, since we know time is taped, so. The plan for our time together is gonna focus, um, on a rebranding and regrounding within the rationale around why are we looking at conducting an English Language Arts adoption right now for our eight to five students? Um, then we're gonna spend the bulk of our time looking at the most recent research, and that's usually dubbed as the science of reading in most articles and research that is coming out. Nowadays, but the science of reading has been around for quite a long time, so we're gonna look at what has most recently been published and what we know about, um, how students learn to read and how they can do. We'll then dive into, um, we'll retouch upon the timeline and the process for the adoption that our district goes through. And within that, we're gonna take a look at some of our administrative regulations that we have and why we do this process this particular way. Um, and then we'll revisit some of our comparison districts, we have some information to share out around what other districts that are high performing, and some of them are demographically similar, some of them are dissimilar, but what are they using? Has been a question, and so we'll take a look at what they're using for ELA. So that regrounding in the rationale, um, this probably looks familiar to the board in that we shared this was at last point. Um, to provide the public as well as the board was, are, are why, why are we doing this adoption, um, right now? So the last time that we had an ELA adoption was actually about a decade ago, it was in two thousand thirteen. Um, and so we want our students and our teachers to have up-to-date information materials that they can use, that was the, the first rationale. The second is data, and we'll, we'll take a look at a couple of recent, um, our CASP sto- scores, um, what we're gonna look at the gap and reexamine that, but that's a big why. We are reaching a, a, a great deal of our students, but not all, and the gap is very clear in the data. Um, we need to make sure that we're allowing all of our students, um, I'm gonna admit somebody right here, sorry, I missed. We need to make sure that we're reaching all of our students, and within that, English lan- English learner development needs to be embedded within this curriculum. So all of the curricula that we are piloting has that ELD embedded component within it. Um, and last but certainly not least is we've experienced a great deal of changing staff, um, I think what I've heard is that approximately fifty percent of our staff are new to us in the, in the past couple of years, and so that means that they haven't necessarily had the training that our more tenured staff that have experienced in terms of professional development, and so we want to bring everybody up to speeding of everybody an opportunity to have high quality and enriching PD, so again, we can have our students benefit from that. So here is that revisit to the data, um, just a minute ago. And what you'll see here is a three-year comparison, so in gray is twenty twenty-one, teal is twenty twenty-two, and then our most recent spring twenty twenty-three CASP data for ELA. On the left-hand side is our ALL, and that has that nice stair step that we want to see, we wanna continue to see that upward trend as we progress. That looks great when we have all the combined data, and where we start to see the gap that I was referencing is when we disaggregate that data or pull it apart. So over on the far right-hand side, you see that our non-socially, socioeconomically disadvantaged students are achieving at high, higher levels, they're, they're continuing to climb upwards and or maintain that higher level of proficiency. And in the middle, our socioeconomically disadvantaged students are, are struggling, the gap is really apparent in this graph. So that's why I wanted to bring it back up, is we're, we're servicing our non-SED students, but you can see here in ELA, our SED students are struggling mightily.
And. My day, I, that the beginning of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, so think yellow, at the beginning of that, in the final year of three-year LCAP, we doubled down and spent five million dollars in an MTSS model, as all of you know, so we had MTSS um, teachers, um, at every site, we had AITs, we had a massive infusion of individualized support at all of our elementary schools. And even with all of that support, our kids in the targeted group, SED, scored lower. And so, now that's a phenomenon we saw across the state, but boy, it makes you pause, a couple thoughts, one is, is what we're doing simply not working, or did it work? And it would have been far worse had we not done what we did, and that we can't, I can't tell you, but it's an important thing to keep in your mind when you think of, um, from the business side of the house, return on investment. I was expecting, based on that targeted, very focused intervention, I was expecting the SED subgroup to expand by ten percent. It went down by two percent, which then, I, is it the curriculum, is it the staff training, what? Right, and that's, I just want you to know, from a superintendent's perspective, when I saw those results, that's what was going through my mind, okay?
What about the thirty-seven, forty-eight though, that's the jump you were talking about?
The, yes, yes.
You just wanted another ten percent.
I wanted, yes.
Fair.
Yes, five million dollars is a lot of money, and I don't know what the answer is, yes, we made progress, but we should have seen more progress, in my mind, okay?
We want it to continually go up, right? That's what we want to use that stair step.
Well, had we, had, had we not invested that level of money and focused money, focused that money in the right spots, in my opinion, um, I would have felt otherwise, but we did, and yet, we didn't see the growth. So we invested in, uh, social emotional learning, lots of different counseling support, academic support focused in those areas, and yet it went down for that subgroup. Those are my, those are my underlying questions as we go into our new three-year LCAP. The research I've done tends, tells me it's our curriculum, it's our instruction and our assessment that needs to really be examined, and I'm glad we're here to talk about that.
Can you tell me what percentage that group is of the total population? Quantity wise?
Oh, number of SED versus non-SED, um, where were we, I don't remember exactly where.
Forty-one percent.
There's forty-one, do you have student count?
Yeah, so forty-one percent of our, um, of our student body identified as so- socioeconomically disadvantaged, so.
And then with the redesignated, because that group includes the ELs.
Correct. Yes.
Next slide.
Well, I thought they were within the, that could be within.
So, so do you, are you asking if ELs, uh, are included in the ARFET as well?
Well, okay, I'll wait to the next one.
Oh, gotcha, okay, so within this next slide, what you'll see is the carryover of that far left-hand side of the whole graph, and then we'll see students with disabilities as the SMUDs are, are the students that are reclassified as fluent English proficient, and then our EL students, so. While it's a celebration that we're seeing that slight staircase with our E- EL students, there's obviously still that room for growth as well, and so that kind of ties back into that designated ELD time, and that being a core component and embedded within our curriculum that we're looking at within the adoption. and that being a core component and embedded within our curriculum that we're looking at within the adoption.
Can I clarify that? I don't know that everybody knows that English learners have designated English Language Development time until they get to be certain pro-level proficiency with English. So it's usually a separate curriculum that really focuses on developing that oral language, the speaking, the listening, and sort of the reading, but there's, that's, so I just don't wanna assume that you know what designated ELD is. And it's supposed to be a curriculum that's connected to what, what you're doing in the classroom. And sometimes you can be given a supplemental curriculum for designated ELD. We have tried to develop our own designated ELD and that has happened over time. I would say random acts of designated ELD have happened, is that fair? And we need something that's super consistent that teachers can go to and know this is what designated ELD looks like and this is how they're connected. So that's what the EL piece is within the curriculum. And so all the curriculums that we're looking at have designated ELD lessons that are connected with the themes or the topics that are in the curriculum that are teaching in the normal Language Arts section.
So does a child, does a child who is receiving the ELD also get the tier-two supports as well? Do they get, in other words, do they get that, that, that win time with the, with the, you know, with the other the separate teachers as well as ELD stuff, so they're getting both?
That, there, I think that, I would say, I can't promise that a hundred percent, but I know if they're scored a one or a two on the LCAP, they're really getting that designated ELD time with their EL specialist. And then we're also looking at their literacy development and where they come up on with a fast bridge to be able to super-target during win time or with that tier-two pull-out. So we're trying to balance that, but am I all not taking them out of the classroom to do this everything, right? Yeah. So having it be connected and provided for us is, is a real critical mission in terms of working at new curriculum, if that makes sense. Does that make sense? I don't wanna assume that everybody knows that.
And Chris, I will say, I was just having this conversation with our MTSS teachers the other day. And it's really a site-based decision based upon the child and where they're exploring, how they're progressing and the needs that that specific student has. If you have someone who is, while they're, it's not necessarily that they're getting, they're not getting the designated ELD time. It might be that they're bridging that gap and needing more of the reading intervention that's happening with, under the umbrella of MTSS, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna experience because that's the best way that I have learned how to do this in terms of the newest research. So you're gonna experience the newest research in the science of reading. And we're gonna presume you are teachers, so you're not gonna be learning as students 'cause this is gonna be like fast forward. You're gonna go through two years of learning in a very short time. But are you ready? So we're gonna ask you to participate and do some thinking, okay? Here you go. Okay. How does a reader become a reader? So you've seen those reading models, right? So this is looking at a reading model. We go with the base simple view of reading. It's word reading times language comprehension equals reading comprehension. And the reason that multiplication part is so important is because if you take word reading and somebody can read the words, but they have no idea what the language is, which is me when I'm trying to read in Spanish, I can read it aloud, I can read it for you, but I don't know what it all means, right? If you, if you have something times nothing equals nothing, right? That's why the multiplication piece is so important. So if you can word read, but you don't understand, you have zero comprehension. The converse is true. If you have all the language comprehension, but you can't read the words, you still have no comprehension, right? When you're looking at the words. So that's why the simple view of reading is so impactful. And we're gonna take a look at very high view of these elements to see what, how can we help develop readers, okay? So how does reading comprehension begin? Reading begins with spoken language. I have learned in this process that you cannot read what you cannot understand if somebody tells you. Doesn't that make sense? If you don't know what the word is when you're hearing it, you can't, you can't decipher it. You have to like have a lot of exposure to language. And so understanding spoken language and understanding written language are the same work for the brain. And we're gonna see little Claire tell us a story to illustrate this.
I'm a little nervous about the audio, so I might have to do some troubleshooting.
Yeah.
Apologies.
Oh, 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 once upon a time, um, I was walking in the jungle and, and I, and then I, and I stopped. And when I stopped, I just heard two snapping branches. But then I knew I was surrounded with hungry bears and coyotes. And, and one of the biggest coyotes and bear grabbed me and I did the, did two, the double eye poke. And that made them startled, made them startled and, and they let go of me. And then I, and I went out as fast as I could until I got to my truck and drove home. And I did. And then, and then, um, when I, I drove home to my mommy and daddy.
And so you were safe?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so glad to hear that.
And, and the bear and coyote never found me again.
So Claire will be able to sound out double eye poke and startled because Claire knows that language, right? But if she didn't know that language, she wouldn't be able to decipher those words. But she clearly, excuse me, did not learn this by reading. This is completely listening to stories. This is interacting as, even Rob, you continue to say, this is talking, right? This is diagnostic conversation that this child has developed this language with. What does that mean for our classrooms? Because we don't teach two-and-a-half-year-olds or three-year-olds, right? When you look in our classrooms, you're looking at GLAD strategies. So all of our TK are developing GLAD strategies, which is that oral language, oral language, verbal language, right? Their vocabulary out loud. They're not reading, but they're developing their background knowledge so that when they get to that reading piece, they have the knowledge to be able to decipher those, those vocabulary words. That looks like interactive read-aloud. So probably the thing that we all remember the most in our classrooms as students is when our teacher read out loud to us, right? So interactive read-alouds. This is content area information, social studies and science, building that background understanding and that vocabulary. And this is, also you can see a text set. And that's something that you guys might encounter. Here's an example of a text set. And it's no more complicated than a set of texts that are really have a related theme to them. And you can have the teacher reading out loud to build background knowledge for students. You can also have students reading through text sets to build their knowledge about something. And I would argue probably we do this as well. We build a text set when we're going after learning something. So the oral language comprehension begins with that oral language piece, right? And I think that's our number slide, right? So high view, not the whole complete picture, but this is where comprehension begins. Is in that, that background knowledge, the vocabulary and the oral, oral comprehension, yeah.
So we're gonna zoom in for a few minutes on the, the word reading side. And really, we're gonna dive into the phonological awareness piece. And this is what I tend to just sort of put under the umbrella of word play that's done with spoken as well as those sounds that you're auditorily hearing and playing with it that way. So we're not necessarily diving into written language at this point still. We're doing kind of like what we're looking for in Claire, where she's able to speak those words into existence. And those are the building blocks that are going, that she's going to be able to apply later when she understands. When I hear that sound, it corresponds and correlates to this particular letter. So we're gonna dive in because that is really the building block for decoding and then blending for students. And so we are actually going to have, we're gonna watch a brief video and we're gonna actually put you and Chelsea on the floor there for a few minutes. And we're gonna do some of that phonological word, uh, sound play.
Phonological awareness is an awareness that the words that we speak can be taken apart. And phonological referring to the sound system of language. It's something that we do auditorily. We're listening to words, we're listening to sentences, we're listening to language and we're hearing it. So it's not about what we're seeing, it's all about what we're hearing. When we talk about phonological awareness with teachers and we teach teachers about that skill, we say phonological awareness skills can be done with your eyes closed so that they understand there's a distinction between phonological awareness and words. Phonological awareness is a broad term that encompasses language in different sized chunks, if that's one way to think about it. So sentences can be taken apart word by word. So young children can clap or march to, I like ice cream, I like pizza. And we get them to really be able to take those, those sentences apart word by word and understand words can be taken apart that way. And then, once they get that concept, we can actually get them to clap the syllables in words that have more than one syllable. So elephant, giraffe. And when they can do that, we go to the next step where they have to actually break those syllables down into smaller units. Those units are referred to as phonemes. A phoneme is a speech sound. So every language has a finite number of those sounds. English has forty-four of them. And before we even introduce kids to the fact that these sounds are represented by letters, again, at a listening and an auditory level, we want them to be able to take those sounds apart within a word.
So we're not watching the full four minutes because we wanted to dive in and actually have you do this and learn a little bit about it as though you were learning it for the first time and then teaching it yourself. So the first thing that we're gonna do is blend. And so when I taught kindergarten and first grade, my cueing system to my students was when I had my hand on my chest, that that was me speaking. And when I extended my hand out, that was the invitation to the class to respond back. And so we're actually going to practice blending a few words together. And so this will be my turn, this will be your turn to put it together. So I'm going to say the phonemes themselves of a word. And when I do this, you're going to put those phonemes together or do what we call blend and say the entire word. At. At, excellent. All right, and we'll do one more. If. Yeah. So that is blending. Is you're taking those individual phonemes, you're putting them together and it forms the word. And again, we're doing this all through auditory and spoken word, right? The next piece is segmenting. And so we're going to kind of do the reverse of what you have just done. And so I'm going to say the full word together. And what I want you to do is take your fist, and you can hide it if you want to, I would do that with the kids. And you're gonna actually segment out each sound or phoneme that you hear within that word. So we'll practice. Sun, go ahead and segment that. All right, can you show me how many fingers you have? How many sounds did you hear? About one. Let's try one more time together. Sun.
Uh.
Oh, got it, got it, got it. I'm making it so. Sorry. Excellent. No, this is all learning, right? Uh, let's try another one. Sail. Most of you are showing three, and I'm not gonna put anybody on the spot. It's A, O. That A and that I go together. And it's hard, honestly, it's hard now, adults, to go backwards and do this because you guys are all fluent proficient readers. You do, you know too much about reading. And so you're, you're picturing probably the word in your mind when you hear it. Instead, so instead of thinking about just what you're hearing, you're picturing the entire word. So this is word play that is done with kiddos pre-writing. Let's do it a little bit more again still. So this is adding and deleting sounds within a word, a little bit more as games. It's adding and deleting a particular phoneme or sound within a word. And so what we're gonna do right now is I want you to think about the word cat. Now, can you say the word? I'll give you a, a second to think time. But when I do this, I want you to say the word cat without the
Cat.
Excellent, okay. So that was a deletion, we took off the C sound, that was in there. Now we're gonna say the word plate without T. Plate without T.
Play.
Excellent. Because they're already working through this, so.
You're halfway, you're halfway. You're halfway through first grade.
Okay, and now we're gonna do substitution of sounds or codes, all right? So we're going to now change a letter out for a different one, okay? So plate, say plate. Now change the T to a Z sound. Right? Excellent. Say choke. Choke. Now change the K to a Z sound. Chose. You guys are fast learners, excellent. So this is word play that teachers, we want them doing this every single day with our youngest learners so that they're able to really manipulate all of those sounds. They're able to translate that into spoken words. And they're able to really identify before they are writing, what are those phonemes? What are the specific sounds that I'm hearing in the words that I'm able to auditorily say?
Hence the fact that we were able to do this shows that we have phonemic awareness.
Does all that curriculum number considering include all these concepts or are some heavier of these?
Yes, and I would say, you know, we're, we're gonna touch upon this in a minute in terms of the full span and the progression that we want to see within the curriculum. But I would say that it's that coherent piece and the, the consistent scaffolding and building upon the skills that right now our district does not have. Is that it's not embedded in the curriculum. It's not completely spelled out and coherent across our grade levels, is that fair?
I think phonemic awareness wise, yeah, we do have a curriculum that we, a supplemental. So you'll see this work happening in every TK, kindergarten and first grade classroom with integrity. And our assessments are tied to that as well. Because we know how important phonemic awareness is, but it wasn't embedded in our curriculum prior to this. But all the curriculums that we're looking at is, is embedded within that.
Amazing. So the, the main point that we want you to take away from the adorable video of the child and what Chelsea and I have been conveying and having practices that it, it probably does not surprise you right now based upon what we've just shared is that most kiddos that have reading difficulties struggle with phonemic awareness. And that likely is clicking and making sense right now based upon what we've just shared.
And this is even true in children who aren't been the kindergarten, first grade age. They've found that even older students who have reading difficulties, they struggle with phonemic awareness. I thought, I was surprised by that, I thought that was really interesting.
So this, Brian, might answer your question a little bit further as well. This is the piece that K to six, we don't necessarily have embedded within our curriculum right now, is this, this clear progression that is, you know, aligning the standards and spelled out for our teachers in a way that is building upon skill after skill. So what you'll see on this slide is, well, I'm sorry, is this supposed to be?
We have a dark workup.
Yeah.
Okay. So phonics instruction is, so it helped me to know that phonemic awareness, as the, the professor said on the video, you could do in the dark. That was helpful to me for some reason. You, I'm not suggesting you should, but you could. And, and then phonics happens when you have letters in front of you. So phonemic awareness is completely auditory. And phonics is when you're adding letters to that sound and making that connection, if that makes sense. And so ways to teach phonics that the most current research is telling us is that you have to have a really strong scope and sequence. And I think prior to, a few years ago, we taught phonics based upon what teachers knew. And we have a lot of
And we have a lot of expertise from some teachers and not as much expertise from others. So we weren't really, we were not following a super explicit scope and sequence. And that, that's something that needs to change. We, and have solid instructional routines so that the time is used super efficiently instead of just sort of, again, random acts of phonics. And to Dr. Prater's point, aligned assessments to support that teaching to mastery and making sure that students really have that. So that's what all of the newest research is really saying, that we need to hone in on this. And it goes K through six. Mr. Vanfield, I don't know if you remember teaching Greek and Latin roots.
What's that?
Greek and Latin roots in the upper grades. Did you ever teach Greek and Latin roots?
No.
So the phonics progression goes all the way through that. That tends to be a sixth grade focus that I know students are engaging in. So are you ready to try some phonics with that phonemic awareness? Okay, good. So now you can open your folders. And what I want you to take out I'm gonna stand up, because it's easier for me. So what you have in front of you, they're called Elconin boxes. And maybe Mrs. Nentzen, I use these, maybe you taught them earlier, didn't you?
I taught, I taught second grade mostly.
Okay.
And some third and some fourth.
Okay, so maybe a little bit. So Elconin boxes, so these are also called sound boxes. And so, as you heard before, we did sounds, we're gonna put some letters in the boxes. Students, I wouldn't give them, we wouldn't give them a choice of boxes. I did this for you. So if you wanna fold it in half so that you learn this one at a time, I just didn't want you to think you're gonna go into a classroom and see like many options. Unless students, yeah. Oh yeah, I actually printed Okay, so we're gonna go through the same sounds that you did with phonemic awareness with Stephanie. But you're gonna now use letters. And when you go in classrooms, you'll see students doing similar things with letters. You might see them with whiteboards and a whiteboard marker. Both things can happen. So your first set of letters is on the left-hand side of your folder. So if you can take those letters out and find the sounds and put those in your sound boxes. At, in that order. Go ahead, the paper letters that you have, you can just put them in the sound boxes. You don't have to write, you can just place them in there. Does that make sense? So now we're connecting Mr. Vanfield, did you wanna say what you found?
Well, I don't know if I wanna say what I found.
Okay.
But my question is, at what point did the learner associate this grapheme with
Good question. Before we did this lesson.
Because I would've put a K if I had a K.
Right, I didn't give you a K for a reason. Yeah, but, so this is exactly, okay, I'm gonna teach you a new word. This is, this is called orthographic mapping. And that sounds like a very complex term. And students develop their understanding of sight words, which we have all been told kids just have to go memorize. Well, newest research tells us that's not true. Students have to orthographically map, ortho being the writing part, meaning they have to connect the sounds with the symbol. Exactly. Does that make sense? So you get the Okay, does that make sense? Okay, so Can you put that word together? Cat, right, blended with phonics, not just phonemic awareness.
So what Was I remember This is my children. Bee says, well
They did, yeah, they would've learned the alphabet sound before we, you're right. They had learned the alphabet before we're doing this lesson.
So they would know that "c" can Sound like
Yes.
Cook, K.
Mm-hmm, they would.
Cook.
Cat. If you're, I'm looking at my chart when I was a kid, was cat and kite were the symbols. Is that what you're looking for? You're right. They learned the alphabet sounds before they did this.
So as us as students right now, we know the alphabet.
You know the alphabet.
We know the alphabet.
Yes, thank you for that. Okay, ready?
Do you know what grade word?
Yeah, you're in kindergarten. You're in, you're probably in
Kindergarten, first
First, yeah.
Kindergarten.
Yeah.
Where?
You're in trimester two of kindergarten.
Trimester.
You've already learned the alphabet in trimester.
Oh, sure.
It is a big thing, actually, that students know the sounds and the names of the letters. That's a goal.
And we also would have cards up that don't just have the alphabetic symbol in one picture, but instead there's sound cards up. So the sound for "k" would have a "c" and a "k" and a "ck" and all the different choices in English that make a "k" sound. So you would have that to write.
Thank you.
If you're using your tools.
Well, at what point would a student associate this symbol, okay, with "k", but then later on circle?
Um, not in kindergarten. Not in kindergarten.
I guess not.
Not in first grade, probably.
Oh, because that would be, that'd be so confusing.
Yeah, it's a lot of repetition, right? You need a lot of repetition and a lot of opportunity to see words that are similar. So you would build, there's an activity that was presented to us to build word ladders in words, and that's where the adding and deleting or the, what's the fourth section? The substituting comes in later, right?
So looking back at this thing that's up here, where we say letter sounds, and we're at the very beginning.
Right.
We're at the second step.
We're going to make sure that the little ones understand a set of phonemes associated or a particular phoneme perhaps in association with this symbol. You can't go beyond that.
Mrs. Vemus, does that, a set of phonemes?
A set of phonemes, right.
Like the doctor said, we have 44 phonemes, 44 sounds in English, but 26 letters.
Right, but to associate with this grapheme.
We teach them
We teach them
That it can make multiple sounds.
Yeah.
It can make this sound or this sound.
But not in first.
In kindergarten, it continues in first grade.
I'm sorry, I guess I, because cat is a solid but circle, we wouldn't teach that to them.
Not right away, but we're here, right? This is the short vowel words, the consonant vowel consonant. And that's where you are with that. And that's after letter sounds, this is our next step. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess so.
Let's go to the next one.
It's okay.
Okay.
This is, this is fast.
So I actually, I imagine letters all over the place, so I put an envelope if you want. Actually, leave cat aside, cat's the special one, everything else can go anywhere. Cat, because cat's coming back, if you remember. Okay, the next sounds I want you to take out in order are the sounds and that is the very next set of letters that are pulled out for you. Can you identify the symbol or the letters that make and put those in your sound, in your sound box, boxes? Do you see where I said sound boxes? Right, it's not one letter at a time, but it's the sounds. And can you blend those words together and read that? Yes, so that sound, what is, what are the letters that make up that "sh" sound? Right, and in the classroom, you would write this to help with that orthographic mapping. So you're connecting the sounds to the writing in the letters as you're reading and writing in that connection. Yes.
Orthographic mapping is clearly an association between the phoneme and the symbols.
And, yes, the, this, yes.
Right.
And how you write it.
And how you write it.
So this helps with your reading and your writing.
So it's, they're building an association.
Yes.
They call it mapping.
Interesting, right? I'm just learning, that's what it means. Yeah, took me a minute.
Okay.
Okay, this, yes, this one you can put in your envelope if you would like. You can keep them, that's okay. All right, your next set of sounds, we're gonna be doing segmenting. Okay, remember we did that with the phonemes? The next set of sounds from your, or letters. Okay, you can put, I would like you to spell the word sun. And of course, you wouldn't be asked to do this unless you could do this. So this wouldn't be new to you. So your
Did you just say sun?
Sun, if you could put your next set of letters in your sound boxes, if you could spell the word sun.
You didn't break that apart quite so well.
No, I'm gonna ask you to. And you segment the sounds in the word sun by touching each letter as you segment them. Ready?
And that's still tracking and touching?
It seems to make a difference that when we do things, we remember them, right?
Touching.
Touch it, yeah. So you did the segmenting, are you ready to segment another set of sounds? Okay. Take out your next set of letters. Now, can you appreciate all the cutting that's been Bothered your time.
You're just pushing for more time, aren't you?
Okay, or pre, or pre prep material, or whiteboards. So what I would like you to do, and you would be able to do this, I wouldn't ask you to do this as a student if you couldn't, is spell the word sail, right? Sail in your sound cards. With your sound card, with your sound boxes, your cards in your sound boxes. I know, you know too much already though, so.
See, I would go like this.
Yes, that's good thinking. Oh, would you?
I can, I can spell sail.
Yes.
But when I say it, I don't hear the "i."
Okay, so let's save, let's segment the word sail. Ready? So where's that? There's three sounds, but there's four letters. Where do you put that fourth letter? So what I want you to know is that "ai" says "a." So you can put those two letters together in that middle sound.
Well, okay, if you say so.
And then we would have you orthographically map, which means write sail, so you would have seen that "ai" and then probably we'd look at a lot of other words that have that "a."
Well, you know, these aren't the syllables, I could just eat them.
You could. Okay, that's segmenting. We're gonna move on, because I know you have, our time is So can you read back, read back that special word cat? If you can. Oh, so we're getting cat out of the kids. We're getting cat out one more time. Because we're gonna practice adding or deleting sounds, okay? So if you bring out the word cat again, and then can you spell the word cat without the
So spell it with letters?
Cat without
Oh, yes.
What word do you get when you take cat without the And you can see the sounds that we got cat with the, that go with the letters, right? So we delete. Okay, now you can put cat in your envelopes. And the, the next one is a little more complicated because we're getting further into first grade, we're getting into first grade, okay?
I don't know, is it victory?
Okay. Can you spell the word plate with the letters that you have here? This could be a little bit of a challenge, but I'm gonna do it. Thinking about sounds again. Oh, sorry, you're gonna need your, you have to flip your card over, continue. You have a few extra letters there, so you get to decide what you think fits the best.
We're spelling plate?
Plate.
I don't, if I'm a child, I don't know what causes that "a" to say its own name.
That's okay. You, you would've been taught that before we did this, just so you
So I can put the "e" on it.
Yeah, you can, yeah, you do know, we do know too much. I'm just, I'm just, the purpose of this is for you to have some experience with what is being asked.
This is true.
And the progression that students go through.
We can invent a French for this one.
We can. So what did you notice about plates? There's a sound, right? There's four sounds with five letters.
You got some real
Yes, the "e" and the "t" get to share a letter box. So we're gonna do one more deletion. Can you spell plate without the
Without that?
Without that?
Well, yeah.
You know, you can do it from what it means.
Don't say that.
You would, I would put "y" See, that's what I
Oh, another way to make this that.
Another way, yes.
Oh, with the
So plate without the "t" is what we're
Play.
Play.
Play, yes, and what makes the "a" sound?
Well
Because I know that.
Yes, you do.
She's really smart.
Do you know that a "y" would make that "a"?
You would.
We would know by then.
And this would, yeah, you would.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You know what's interesting, Chelsea, when I taught violin, we had a lot of Eels in my class. But I could have about five to seven, maybe more, of different groups that I'm teaching at a different level, all of this. Yeah, so it's like having the, the little balls in the air all the time. So do we put these away now?
You have to throw away. Um, there's substituting, but I think you understand the whole experience, right? And how does this come into play in our lives, in the world?
Oh, you used it in the sun, that was good.
Thank you. Somebody deleted it. All right, I have been waiting to use this graphic, this picture. Yes. Show a picture. Where do you see it in the world? Yes, and so here's how Yeah, and it's gone. So when you say at Starbucks, I said my name was Mark with a "c."
Oh, yeah.
You can tell
I love that.
That this person needs more practice with their adding and deleting of their sounds.
Or less crap.
Yes.
Mark with a "c," gotcha. It was being very, well, it was
Don't go to Starbucks today. Okay. So now you're gonna see evidence of this everywhere. Now you know about the substituting and
Which makes sense.
Yes, it does, thank you.
That was an interesting exercise, that was very
Good, so This is, I know, I figured we need to go on time wise.
Yeah, we do, I do wanna point out though that I think in the past there was concerns about phonics being taught through drill and kill, and it's boring, and it only works half the time. And part of the purpose of this activity was that phonics could not, does not necessarily need to be taught through worksheets and boring practice, but instead the students will learn it better and more quickly if they're actually manipulating things and playing.
Yeah. And so, one, for some reason, a few of our slides are missing, but one that's really important and really represents the newest information and science. Sorry, I have to put my glasses on. Including both systematic phonics, meaning following that progression that we saw, and meaningful interactions with text, both of those things leads to the most powerful outcomes for beginning readers. So in our classrooms, you'll see teachers teaching phonics and also interacting with decodables that have been updated so that books that are rich with meaning as well as having words that you can sound out, because that has been historically frustrating for teachers is you have words that you, kids can sound out, but the, but the story didn't make any because that has been historically frustrating for teachers, is you have words that you, kids can sound out, but the, but the story didn't make any sense. Just, you know, because it's hard to have words that you can sound out and have a meaningful storyline. So publishers are really trying to create books that are meaningful and decodable, is what they call them. And I know that Mr. Buckman asks about that, um, frequently. So I went backwards so that you could speak. Okay, so, so now we've looked at high level language comprehension, starts with that oral language, that background knowledge, and the word reading begins with that oral language and that phonemic awareness and phonics, right? So we've hit those very simple pieces of reading, and there's a few other strands that we need to address.
Okay, so we are going to take a look further in your packet, we're not going to ask you to read this entire article, but just three paragraphs of it. So take a look, it's spelled in a nice green color, and um, Mandy, if you're on Zoom, would you be able, for anyone who's zooming in, I have the article linked in the presentation, if you wouldn't mind putting that in the Zoom chat for anyone who wants to follow along, that'd be awesome.
Unfortunately Stephanie, we don't have chat in the board, um, meeting Zoom.
Okay, um, the, for anyone that's following along on Zoom, if you have the presentation link, it's on this slide right here in the notes, you should be able to view that. So on page four, you're, we've got the fluency paragraph walked off, and then you'll continue over onto page five to finish up that fluency paragraph, and then read vocabulary and comprehension. And what we're going to ask you to do is annotate those three paragraphs, and so you can underline any key ideas that you find within those three paragraphs, and you can start one sentence in each section that resonates with you. So we'll give you.
So it starts with fluence.
Yeah, and so we'll give you about three or four minutes to read through, underlining any key ideas and starting a sentence in each section that resonates with you. So one powerful teaching strategy that um, we want all teachers to use is something called a turn and talk. And um, it's called a turn and talk. So we'll ask you to turn and talk with your neighbors, um, we'll have a triad over here in a duo, and I would like for you to share either something that you've starred or underlined from each paragraph with one another, okay?
Oh, she, she just got asked.
Oh.
Are you my buddy?
Yeah.
Is your kid buddy?
Take out Lisa.
Because I noticed you.
We're not on the house.
Because people aren't behaving, Carolyn.
I know.
Well. I'm like your partner.
Come on over, we'll be partners together.
Yeah, very good.
So.
Rob, you can sit facing us.
You know, I didn't live in this land necessarily, so it's.
There you go, what jumped out at you?
Uh, I'm under fluency. Um, I underlined achieving reading fluency requires phonological awareness. To present knowledge and with fluency.
Well, it's, it got me, it got me meaning, well, it's that. I'm processing. For a while now. The color. Clearly comes from a home that has a lot of language.
Yeah.
And I can tell she was reading well, things are. Right, I mean, I grew up on that one, right? I remember it vividly, but imagine now.
What's the line?
Aren't being read to. And have a different kind of.
I don't know, beginning.
Different kinds.
Well, that was just.
You're so driven, and I'm focused on the.
Yeah, part of it.
All this, all this, and imagination of the research.
And so, well, this is a video, I was thinking, if we're not teaching how to improve these kinds of.
I could ask you to use multiple strategies for nation, but overall.
Imagine, imagination of the story. Would you clear for us?
No, I'm just, I'm rather quick to.
Clear for you.
You can do it something on the chat box.
I used to work at Kers, it's great.
Yes, and it says additionally.
It's not. Oh my god. Great, I'm gonna pull the group back together. We're short on time here.
Chelsea and I could talk about this all day, if you guys have given the choice.
Anytime.
We're ready, we're coming, get them on down.
Can I go to the bathroom now?
It's on the side eye.
Thank you, Rob. Alright, so as I was going around to the groups, I could hear some of the things that are embedded within this next slide being spoken about, and it's really within the fluency piece, it's that ability to decode or recognize words correctly. And in um, education speak, we call that accuracy. And then doing that with intonation and phrasing is prosody. At a pace, or rate is how we typically refer to that, that allows for comprehension of the ideas as a whole, as opposed to the individual words that are being read. So this is what Chelsea was speaking to at the very beginning of the presentation, where word reading is one component, but you also have to have the other pieces, such as the, the ability to comprehend, to get the overall picture, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's where fluency, you'll see in this graphic here, it's really that bridging skill between decoding over into comprehension.
Yeah, and then vocabulary is another critical piece, although Mr. Buckman, of course, pointed out that it did say, there is not as much research on that. Um, but we do in the classroom teach what we call tier one, tier two, and tier three words. Tier one being, being the most widely used in print and everyday conversation, and tier two being very specific to academics. So um, our goal is to spend a lot of time in tier two words, they're more sophisticated and more common in written rather than spoken. And then tier three are gonna be the things that the specialist, like if you're a chemist, you're gonna know chemistry words. If you're in construction, you're gonna know words specific to construction.
Mm-hmm.
Which is honestly why we did this today, because all of you while being in education aren't always steeped in all of the language and vocabulary of what we do in the really small granular ways that we make a difference, right? So that phonemic awareness, knowing what that means, it matters, but not to the average person, right, on the street locally, they don't need to know that. And so that brings us to um, comprehension being the outcome. Um, in the re, reading in yellow, and it's a result of a person's ability to read fluently in different situations, and having enough knowledge and vocabulary to understand what they're reading. And we keep going through the cycle again and again and again, as we continue, I would argue, um, it's still happening today in my life. So we wanna build the, the capacity for people to continue to read more and comprehend, figure out new words and new language. Um, and that's the very high overview of how reading happens.
And I think, I just wanna say thank you for engaging with us in this, I'm not sure how it would be received, so thank you for learning with us.
So. In um, achieving phonemic awareness, which people don't often come up to me in the market and.
Thank goodness, right?
Ask me a question, and I say, well, are you familiar with phonemic awareness?
Yes, and it's okay.
But I do, I do wonder, I guess I have two questions, in all of this, is there any um, uh, use of picture clues? In texts, or not in texts, but in books, so that children can be using phonics as well as getting clues from, content clues from the pictures?
Sure, I think that the newest research indicates most specifically that what we want students to do is pay attention to those letters and sounds first, okay? Right, so that they can sound those words out, because reading is really sounding out words and not looking at pictures, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So they sound those words out, and then they can look at that picture to see if that helps to confirm. But honestly, that's up to the illustrator and the author, right? So they don't always imply what you want them to, and when you're a second language learner, you might not have the language. To, um, so attending to print first is what the newest research says.
Like students will still use their cueing systems of like semantics and grammar, and I was in a classroom, a seventh grade classroom at Lambs, and a student was, read the word Polish, because it was about World War Two, as polish. Those two words are spelled exactly the same on the page, and the only way to know which way to pronounce that words is the context. And we do still teach up at those upper level, that is the upper level of reading comprehension, is that we're using the other cueing systems of language beyond the spelling, phonics, graphic representations of words. So we will still be teaching that, but that comes later in the process.
Okay.
Now, you decode first, you look at the words first and use your sound cues first, and then you confirm or change what you think that word is, based on all the different knowledge about language you have.
Thank you, so, second part of my question, I guess, is, there is um, resist, i, i, in some circles, there is resistance to uh, this method of teaching reading.
It's, it's interesting, because I don't know if that's true when you talk to researchers.
Oh, I don't know what researchers think or, or believe, I'm talking about among teachers.
Oh, okay.
That they feel, there's, you know, some feel that there is a different method that is desirable and successful.
Mm-hmm.
And are you able to explain why, what, what that other method is, and uh, why there seems to be sort of two camps on this?
Sure, I think um, this is, this is gonna be partly experience and partly opinion, so I'm just gonna share that, right? So my experience is, once people read the research, we don't have um, much dispute in conversation. Uh, because um, the research is clear about what it takes to help students read. And so once we read the research, I think teachers um, are willing to have, and like, yes, let's go down the road together. I can tell you that um, phonics in particular, in the past, kind of what I spoke to about those decodables that didn't make sense, were very frustrating to so many, and so they wanted to bring love of reading and meaning to the forefront, and that's where um, phonics kind of fell away, because it was boring and didn't always make sense in the way that felt meaningful to people. Okay, so, I think it makes sense, and what research shows is, kids, especially those who struggle, have to have that explicit phonics, because not all of us get that AI says A without repeating it over and over and over again. Our most vulnerable kids need that repetition. Um, and we also need meaning, so I think we're in a great time in education where we're putting those two things together. And I don't think any teacher would argue that, honestly, if being presented with the science.
Okay, and it, I can see on the, I'm taking more than my share of time, and I apologize, but when you disaggregate the data, you know, when you look at the overall, it's looking pretty good.
Sure.
But when you disaggregate it, you can see that there is a whole large group of students that we are missing.
Yeah.
And we need to address their needs, I totally get it, um. Like, I had a point.
I think you made it, you were representing.
Did I make it? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, not everybody sees it exactly the same way I would expect.
Well, I had phonics, you know, I'm a product of phonics, my kids have whole language. You know, everybody's reading, but my daughter didn't, it clicked in the summer between first and second grade. You know, but the whole first grade year, she just wasn't getting it. Nothing different happened during that summer, you know, we always, she, she was a, was a child who had the um, the good fortune to have parents who read to her.
Yes.
And what have you, and I know not all children have that, so, but that, you know, both kids, and my, my son was reading the phone book going into kindergarten, so they're just different.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Yeah. So, yeah, Bill, did you have a problem with that?
No, I was just, I was, I think getting back to one of your first statements, I believe there can be some resistance, being former instructor.
Sure.
I, when I was hired in eighty-seven, the district had moved away from phonics to whole language. And um, the adoption was core literature, there were several novels, novels that each grade level had. And that was kind of my bread and butter, because I knew no other.
Right.
And if teachers are, well, I'm just the kind of person, I'm a creature of habit, and it's hard for me to shift gears. It's not impossible, but it's hard.
I, yeah.
And so, yes, and so, you know, I'm sure there will always be instructors that will question something.
Sure, you know, we brought in Hagerby last year, or the year before, and overwhelmingly, all those lower grade teachers, people who've been doing it forever, have said, this is amazing, this is a game changer, this is what I've been missing and I didn't know.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
And, and I, let's remind the board too, we're not trying to do one or the other, this is going to be an and. We're gonna read wonderful, fabulous literature children and staff can get excited about.
Yeah.
And we're going to systematically teach foundational skills of language to the students who, who need it.
And it, I just wanna add that it's not necessarily boring, I've heard it alluded to as boring.
Yeah.
Well, for me as a child, I adored phonics and phonics workbooks, and then when I use them within language, it's a sense of mastering, and because they're going from the different stages of mastering, and I love that. And then also, it's a good foundation for spelling, because I learned which group of words, the AI words. And then also, it's a good foundation for spelling, cause they learn which group of words, the AI words like weight.
Right.
Um is spelled W A I and gate is in the silent E group, G A T. So it helps with spelling and they're going to have master spelling too.
I think that brings up to being able to differentiate. And it's hard to differentiate for different groups and with their needs if you don't have the materials to do that. If you had to make this up, you know, and cut out all the pieces separately um and and create it, that that provides a barrier. But if we have materials that have all of the options there, that's helpful.
We had to make that.
I thought in the nineties, the Mac and Tab books, they they weren't that boring, no. I just loved having a long set of Mac and Tab.
My uncle.
Well, I think to speak to the water um perspective too, that that it's the undercurrent maybe in this conversation of what Marilyn and Rob are both saying is, the professional development that we provide our teachers is also going to be incredibly enforced. Because we can give people resources and we want them to understand the why behind it, right? Understand these concepts that we're sharing with you and why it's so important and why the science of reading continues to evolve. And we wanna be responsive to our kiddos and make sure we're giving them both sides of that equation.
And when we see success, we're convinced.
I just wanted to know, is there's, are teachers still, um, I don't know if they ever were, but are teachers still encouraged to do rereads?
That was part of the first, yes.
Well, I saw the thing about uh acquiring fluency, you have to do the reread, but I'm talking about.
So go back to that first slide with the little girl, right, with Claire.
Story time.
Building that oral language and the application in the classroom is read aloud, read aloud is critically important.
Yep.
That listening.
That is, there's still.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Story time.
Yes.
Okay.
Mark.
That was my favorite time of the year.
Do it all.
Me too.
As a teacher.
Everybody.
Yeah, Mark.
So I just wanted to thank you because I play Scrabble a lot. And grapho phonological semantic is my new winning.
You could only get.
It's your game.
And it's.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you know, I just wanted to point out, I studied at the board meeting the other night, but when I went to Bishop's Peak the other day and saw Mrs. Ron teaching this and the kids were so engaged. And it was exactly what you were doing and, you know, I think the thing is, the teachers really buy into it, you know, her enthusiasm was palpable.
Absolutely.
It's good, it's good.
You know, the material she had and the way she was teaching and what she was doing, you know, it was so engaging. I mean, it just was great to feel.
You get somebody with energy to do that.
Yeah, it basically.
And it's, you're all the teaching, it'll be great.
Yeah. So I think this is, you know, it's been interesting as, and you know, as older person what but always involved in education through all my years watching these cycles. And the way I was taught and the way, um, you know, I taught high school, but so it was different. But it was teaching a foreign language and getting those skills and then I tried at the college level and, you know, just seeing. And then watching my own children and what they learned, it was whole language, but also always realizing that you know, there were kids who in their school or whom English was not a first language. And noticing their, yes, just in vocabulary. But I I think something I've really noticed over the years is that teachers from kindergarten are using richer vocabulary.
Yes.
Which are, I mean, when my kindergarten, first grader came home and said, we have a a rubric about this. Like, rubric, I don't think I knew what that meant until, you know, I was teaching, taking teaching classes, you know, in class. Or, you know, a prompt, we have a reading prompt, or teachers saying, everyone's like, you know, my mathematicians, you know. And at the elementary level. And I really appreciate the richer vocabulary because it's exposing those kids to more and more language.
Right, so as teachers, we don't talk down and try to use some lower words, we try to use more complex words.
And I hope, I hope everyone can also appreciate that our new summer experience program extends the school year six full weeks. So we talk about imagination, exposure and doing things that maybe some kids don't get in their home environment. We are inserting ourselves into that in a very purposeful way. So when this, when this um new adoption is identified and then we develop it, I can envision, maybe not this summer, maybe this summer if we're really lucky. But certainly moving forward past this summer, we'll really be able to hone in on those kiddos that are missing that that link, I love the puzzle piece visual. Um decoding, fluency, comprehension.
Yes.
It's so real. And I think, I think for us, if we can really look at not just what we do in regular year but also grabbing a hold of those kiddos that just need a little something extra consistently for an additional six weeks in summer. I think we're gonna see huge differences over the course of several years. So I'm super excited about that.
Just, you know, just to. Well, I don't know what your schedule is, but I think what we did today might be really interesting at parent leaders, at student senate, at um PPA's, at school site councils. Because then we're gonna, it's just, they're gonna be salespeople out there that are gonna just overpower any of that resistance that we're gonna get. And this was.
That's the way for our parents.
Yeah, absolutely.
And our, and and we are having a parent education series, so that's gonna be part of this. I just wanna say, say thanks to Stephanie and Chelsea.
Yeah, yeah.
Lot of really good work, patience. And and as you can tell, I'm super interested in having you bring your knowledge and your your awareness of the process to the board. Not just this time, not in a one in, one out, but consistently because we're gonna be asking the board to adopt a new English Language Arts curriculum come April, April? So if I'm the board member and I'm having to make that decision, well, it'd be so helpful if I was able to do this activity and really understand the thinking goes underneath it. And um I I would have much more confidence in this big shift in our district. I actually don't think it's a big shift. I think it'll be a big shift for some, but for majority, I think it's gonna be welcomed and really helpful, especially the ELD component.
Yeah.
So.
There's a few other pieces I think will be super helpful also.
Yeah.
Well, I think I'm going to adjourn as day today.
In the do.
Sorry that it went so long.
Five hours, so. Yeah.
That's really, really good.
Call it a day here, thank you everyone um on Zoom for joining us today.